Yep, I'll just go right around.
Doing roll call.
So Elizabeth Barrett, Pip Clues, Lisa Rappaport.
Hello.
Anne Walker.
Here.
Margaret Peabody.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Hope Van Epps.
Here in the flesh.
Ryan French, Carrie Nelti.
Carrie's on the phone.
Here. Danielle Miles and Nick Dolan.
Okay, shall we stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item is the public hearing. Do we have a motion to go into the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anyone for the public hearing? Anyone on Zoom for the public hearing?
We never do.
That's true. Pass to you.
Nobody's even looked at it at this point.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go out of the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Workshop, we start with Kenny?
That's the plan. Kenny's here to do a little bit of a deeper dive in facilities and answer your questions.
Hi, Brian. We just started. You just walked in at the perfect time.
Hi there. Alright, so I've done a PowerPoint with facilities. So with the operations side, how much should we spend for the 187, which is the athletic buildings, the 188 and the 189. The 189 is the energy, 188 is operating. The numbers presented to you in the budgets, there's not a lot of changes through those numbers. There's a little bit in the athletics that kind of cover the offset of the increase in materials in the organic fertilizing program. The 188 as of right now is level funded based off the request guidance. And then the 189 is the energy. Nathan got some numbers.
I'm going to interrupt you 30 seconds before you go. Just remind everybody at your place setting tonight, Kenny's got a colorful slide that we're going to put on.
We're going to put right after the talk.
Okay, good. And the other document is, I know I've done it at least once before, but it's variances to give you numbers. Cost center by cost center, what changed in the FTE headcount, what changed in the operating budgets, and off to the right a description of what that is and why, just to give you something as a starting place to go through that book. So Kenny just made reference to cost centers 187, 88, and 89, and you'll see those pop out on the last page of that. Alright, just wanted to make sure that we knew where we're headed. Kenny and I would have to go.
Yeah, well, I'm going to have to just go put it up.
Is that this? So we have it right in front of us?
Yes. So that's why I handed it out to all somebody to decide to restart.
So this is just the variances for the proposed budget?
This is what this budget, this matches your book. It matches what's in your budget book right now as proposed. And there's, I guess, while Kenny's rebooting, the first line of that document, we can go back and look at that after Kenny's done, but if you have any questions, but the first line is a catchall for the change in salaries and benefits related to collective bargaining and cost of living. So right now, your budget book's a little bit, weird is the wrong word. It's a little bit off because Andrew and I, you met Andrew at the meeting a week ago, Andrew and I are still finalizing the spread of the $2-plus million from the city across all of the accounts. So right now, I can't show you, I can't show you what the cost of living for the new year is year over year in the separate cost centers. I know that we have plugged in face by face by face what people are supposed to make in the new year. So the new year is good. I'm just trying to backfill the old year. But right now, the variance of salaries wouldn't make any sense because it's a two-year spread. It's a last year, it's a last year all the way to next year without having a touchdown in this year. Does that make any sense? So anyway, that's why I didn't spell out all of the salary increases. It's all in that first line. And then the only thing you'll see in salaries below are the positions added and deleted that you have in your proposed budget.
Actually, one other thing. Well, I'm assuming we're still rebooting, so it's a good time for me to squeeze it in. I'll also share out with you tonight a shared Google Doc. So we'll have the opportunity to talk to Kenny. But as we go, if you, if you're at home and you start to develop questions, it's a place for you to dump questions. So it gives us an opportunity in advance to do, you know, do a little bit more research on what we might be able to do in the moment, you know, give you better answers than we might be able to do in the moment. So I'll share out that document sometime in the course of things this evening. And then as we move through the process, it's a place, you know, it's a place for you to kind of dump in those questions and we'll do the work to make sure we're ready to answer.
Thank you.
Trying to jump some hoops to get back in. So this thing's been running all afternoon, so I decided to reboot itself down here.
Isn't that always the case?
So while we're, it's in the same cost center order. What else can I tell you that? If we have a few minutes, I certainly can answer some questions tonight.
I was curious on the Little Harbor, the staffing proposed reduction, what grade was that or what was the reduction? For one teaching position?
So as the position, if you remember when Erin came and talked to us, she talked about how she had a position that was a rotating, she'd basically been in a position where multiple people had been on maternity, and she kind of had been able to use it as kind of a buffer and was, as people were coming back in, she then was allocating those people for intervention purposes. So it's that position. What that position was prior to this year, which grade level, I can't tell you. But what, we would be down an additional classroom position, which wasn't fully being utilized this year. And then depending on the, how we reallocate that position would depend on looking at class sizes.
So I guess I'm curious with all the need of special ed intervention and the lack of substitutes in finding special ed, all the open positions.
Yep.
Why we would be reducing versus using this person in continuing intervention ways?
Sure. When we, the other night when we introduced the budget, we talked about kind of our framework for our kind of theory of action around it. And one of the things we were, we've been trying to do is, and we talked a bit about this here, was we're anticipating that it's going to be, the city's going to come in high this year. We think because of all the collective bargaining agreements around the, around the city, that we're going to be looking at a big set of increases. And then we talked about our, in conversations with the city, city manager, finance office, trying to figure out a target number for us. And the target number that we came to that we thought was going to be passable with city council was around 4%, so in order for us to get to 4%, we couldn't, we didn't cover any of the ESER positions that were part of, that's in, that are in there right now. We'd roll them over for another year and fully fund them through ESER and not through the local budget. And then we still needed to, we still needed to find additional savings to come to hit that number. So it's driven by trying to find a number that we thought reasonably would get passed by city council.
Okay. Again, I just would push back a little bit and say that with all the intervention that we know is still needed.
Absolutely. Yep.
Why not leave it in and have the council ask us to pull something out like they always do? And then we can be like, oh, we can give you this.
Sure.
Right? I mean, so then we're not giving them, we're not already taking off the cream and having to dig into the pie to get them.
So what, and we talked about this too. As we thought about it, one of the things, one of the tenants of how we developed the budget was really thinking carefully about maximizing the influence of professional expertise within the people who you paid to do the work. And what we don't want to do is, we intentionally were not over asking with then, potentially over asking, with then being in a position where maybe city council is carving back some of what, well, we don't think you need this or we don't think you need that. And our concern was that if we put people in that position, that we might prioritize different things than city council might. And we might get, we might hold on to stuff that we think is less valuable than the things that we think were most important. So what we talked, we talked about the idea of coming in, initially this represents the 4%, that our next ask back after that would be half of the, do a step down on the ESER positions. So pay half of those ESER roles with local money, half with federal. So we move into next year, we're not facing an ESER kind of cliff where we're going to have to deal with all those positions at the same time. And then our second ask back was like, if you want to go even further, pay for all those positions through the local budget. And that would get us to six, Nathan, six and change percent. So that was kind of the, that's the tiers of kind of where we're at in terms of how we built it.
Okay. Okay.
And that's what got us to like, this is a, we need to find some reductions in order to pay for those other things.
The council can't line item anyway. The council cannot line item anyway.
Correct. And I think, and I appreciate that, and...
I mean, sometimes they might say something, but they don't have the right.
Right, right. And I appreciate that. And if you get, I just, I worry about our relationship with the council because we can say they don't line item and they can say, well, we're going to reduce your budget by, you know, $92 and a half thousand, which just happens to coincide with the line item position we don't like. You know, you know how this goes, right?
I know.
So I think that's, you know, I appreciate that and understand that sometimes the political reality is a little different than on paper what their powers are.
Okay, thank you, Hope, for the question and the clarification. Now we can move on to Kenny.
I'm on.
Perfect timing. Perfect timing.
We'll run, we'll run right through this. So facilities, I've also hinted at all the packet as a follow with the power slide as well. In our department, you know, we have the four technicians and I've itemized out each school of what we have for coverage. Right now, we are, you know, short staff. We're missing a half custodian at Little Harbor, one at Dondaro, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. Right now, we're trying to find the labor force. It's been slowly of the hiring process, but that gives you an idea of where we are there. The facility department, you know, we're responsible for all the infrastructure and maintenance of the courses. Goals to ensure that we meet the local and state regulations. We, the department also sees all the capital renovation projects. We look at hiring personnel to be efficient as we can to extend the use of life of facilities. With in-house, the facilities is about 679,000 square feet, and we are responsible for all the custodial, carpentry, plumbing, and electrical, and HVAC. As we were just talking about earlier with snow, as predicted again this coming weekend, the facility department with the maintenance guys, including a high school as well, we plow and treat all the grounds of courses goals, and we kind of give it an acreage, which kind of gives personnel a little bit more of a realistic look of what we do there. And then when we get into the spring season, fall, and summer, we maintain roughly about 60 acres of grounds between the athletic complex and the other facilities throughout, not only just Mo, but we also maintain a tariff management at the high school. We do all the sporting events setups, playground equipment repairs, maintenance, and we also maintain our parking lots and striping and painting as needed throughout. Sustainability has always been a forefront in this department. About six years ago, we looked at certain ways of when the city went to single stream, and then we started implementing Mr. Fox and our composting in all schools, to where the elementary schools now, the dumpsters only picked up once a week. We've been able to reduce roughly about 24 yards of trash each week to a landfill due to the composting, composting each week. Depending on which school, but we usually average a 60-gallon tote, a big green recycling tote that you see outside, are roughly about half full, if not maybe almost full at each site. It's picked up once a week. The Porson High School complex is also, we started, I started a fertilizing program back in 2008. This year, we've really enhanced it to be AMRE certified, where we've taken some time, but we've started to see some great returns and going organic. And we also do it with pest management as well. So we can honestly say that that complex is 100%. Gardens throughout the school, we have a rain garden, PHS, butterflies. Nathan was kind of surprised to see this one when him and I were talking. And then we are starting to talk again with Ian Fleischer and Phil Davis about potentially looking at the rooftop garden again at the middle school to see what some costs, and maybe some future fundraising to help towards that. So we've started that ball rolling again. And then there's always a discussional piece on how do we put a greenhouse at PHS. The site's very tight, but there is a couple of opportunities that hopefully will, you know, get that ball moving again. And then there's an interior green wall above the gymnasium on the right side. When you go from foreign language, the students have a bunch of greenery and things like that hung up there. So our panels, you can see, we continue. We have two at PHS, one at New Franklin, one at Dondaro, and one at PMS. They're all really educational purposes. The kids can see what we generate per day or per month, per year. The links have been sent out to schools. And I have a slide on the next one, on the big one at the high school that we did back in 2016. And then we continue to work on EPA-regulated paper products, recycling, and microfiber cleaning. As I stated about the kilowatts for the high school, this is the system that we installed, the 252 kilowatt system back in 2016 as part of that citywide initiative where we also did Madbury Water Treatment Plant. To date, you can see that we've generated almost 2.04 gigawatts of hours. And then you can see the ratios down below of what we've reduced by gas, methane, trees, and water. And at the top number, if you look at 322 and the 252, that's what's just been generated this month as day 17 of January. So these are always a rolling scroll. We have this also showing in the foreign language wing as you cross over where the green wall is, so the students can see this as well. Security. This kind of gives you an overview of each school. You know, there's cameras, there's access control throughout each school. We continue to look at new key points of accessing with a keyless entry in certain doors. We're continuing looking at changing cameras, relocation cameras. And two years ago, we actually went ahead and put the entire district on one system. We had a system at the high school, we had a system in the elementaries, and we had a system at the middle school. They all worked. We just couldn't, we couldn't talk to, you know, without having licensing issues. So we went ahead and used grant funds and we consolidated everybody on a visual on. Since then, in the recent grant funds, we did get some access control funds, which we just wrapped up at the high school. And I got one left at the middle school, which I'm waiting for a card to come in, a control card, so we can finish that. Also with the middle school, we just relocated a lot of the cameras from exterior to kind of give us a better vision of the perimeters where we weren't looking down. Now we're kind of looking more across that way. Dondaro, as you can see, they have full circle. Little Harbor's full circle. Lister Academy is a system that when we look to relocate a community campus, we'll remove that system and shift out over that way.
Before you leave that, go back, talk to me about, we don't want to focus a lot on weaknesses, I guess, but you have...
When it comes to security, yeah, we do.
So let's talk as security as a whole. So...
I don't want to focus on them on camera, is all I meant. So...
Overall, I think our buildings are very secure. We have, we have up-to-date hardware. All classrooms are lockable, whether you're an elementary or a middle school. There is a mechanism or way to lock the classroom from the inside without going to the hallway. All doors in certain areas that can be shut down in hallways. We're in the process of installing another panic control system now that will be activated by the end of this week, which gives them another deterrents. And this is related to the access control system. Also in the last few weeks, I've met with Pastic Security. It's a national, nationwide company that is, specializes in all aspects of doors, controls, hardwares, and the list just goes on and on. They're also a representative and a vendor of what we have for materials. So we've looked at and started evaluating is how can we improve where we are to make the function less thoughtful, if you want to say. So when that situation comes into play, it's maybe you hit one button and there's an indicator that says it's locked. It's a red. Or it's green, that means it's open. You know, the passageways in certain classrooms will change their function of the doors. You know, so we're working on those things now as well.
Kenny, can you speak more to that around, because it's come up at some pack meetings and then some in these meetings with the public comment about the lockdown system? Because my understanding is there's like things that can be done that's out there, but there's also things that like the fire department says, no, we don't want to do those things. So can you, that help on, you know, lockdown classrooms right away? Like I know some districts have that, but we don't necessarily have that.
So our lockdown system is either by a key or by a push button. So all your corridor doors that go out in the hallway, I know the middle school has a key initially in every single lock to practice that works there. All the elementaries have a push button.
So they push that button from the office in every door?
Push the button, and that door is locked from the hallway to the corridor.
Yeah, but not classroom doors, not classroom doors.
Classroom hallway doors are locked by a push button in elementary. Now, there's doors in between that is a function and a passageway that is freegoing now as it is. There is a lock that we're looking at to purchase that would remain that door to be locked at 24/7. That would need a key access to go ahead and open through that door. So we are looking at those mechanisms as well. The teachers will tell you that, you know, some teachers know, say it takes 10 and a half desks to barricade my doors. You know, there's other things that they see in the TikTok world or, you know, through their friends of a friend. But life safety comes into play of the, like the fire codes that somehow prevent us from, you know, adding a thing over the door closure, which you can't, you know, you can't criminally move. You know, we put keys in knockboxes for the fire department and police to access our schools. So when they do our searches and they do their perimeter checks, they can actually still access. So we have to make sure we abide by life safety, but try to get them to do their job as well without breaking through.
So we're talking about locking. Can you talk a little bit about unlocking? Can you unlock those doors just as quickly once they're locked down?
So by fire code is I have to, any door inside a school, I have to be able to unlock by going down. So, and all our schools do that, and we verify that. So it has to be that one motion that that door automatically unlocks. And so all our doors, hardware since, even with the high school 2002, the middle school in 2013, and the elementary schools, all our hardware has been up. We're still upgrading New Franklin's, but New Franklin, we put a different mechanism in play that their doors are locked at all times. But they can still egress by one switch of a handle.
And that'll be the mechanisms going into Lister?
Lister already has that right now.
I mean, the new building?
The new building, yes. Yeah, we have to. It's a life safety code, and I have to have that one motion. I can't turn a lever to unlock a door inside due to life safety code.
Can I ask one last question? A couple of the elementary principals have mentioned now that we're having kids outside more for outdoor, that the sound system, it can't carry as far as where some of the, is that part of the list of, is that considered part of security? Is that considered part of just general?
So PA externally is usually a functional piece.
Okay.
It's an operational piece. Some schools have a PA speaker that goes out to a playground, and some schools don't, like the high school doesn't, the middle school doesn't. Little Harbor has one that goes out towards the playground. Dondaro, I mean, New Franklin has one on each side. Dondaro has one that goes out. But the question comes into play is, is Dondaro, for instance, you're going to probably hear that PA as you get through the pavement and start to get to the field. But I don't think I want the neighbors to hear it through the trees.
The neighbors don't want to hear it through the trees.
That's what I mean. You know, but how do you, how do you judge?
Where's the balance?
Where's the balance of that? But we do have PA systems externally as well.
Okay.
But, so we've talked about the fact that some of the ESER funds that we're talking about using on infrastructure now are for emergency communications, which is about as kids are outside more and away from the building more, as well as things happening inside the building, what kind of tools do we have? I think we've made some, we've transitioned over the last several years to, well, everybody's got a phone, so why aren't we just using our phones? And there's some place for that. But we're talking about, you know, a more, a more commercial-grade radio system that expands our ability to communicate in an emergency or even in the routine for that matter. There's benefits across the spectrum, so that's something that we're pursuing right now as a big project with ESER.
We're, I'm hoping to have that priced next week for the two-way radio system.
You know, and I think our lean is going to be, in terms of more effective communication, it's going to be have your lean on radios and PAs, just because I think even really good PAs are not as, tend not to be as effective as, you're taking your class out, here's your walkie you bring with you. So, I mean, I think we can always explore, continue to explore those types of technologies, but the lean is going to be towards these higher-end radios, so we want to...
Especially at the high school, because sometimes when they're taking kids out, they're down at the fields.
They're on for a while. Yeah, so we're looking at that as well to change out. And we made changes to our fire alarm system panels as well, which allows the principal to, you know, need systems activated. They can still activate their PA system internally and externally, so they can still do announcements. So if there's something that they don't want the kids to evacuate, we can make that, make that change as well.
It's being recorded, right?
Yep.
Can you just speak real quick, because it's come up to me and it's come up, city council members have also come to me, about where our defibrillators are. All schools have them, right? But since we're, since it is being recorded, I'd like it to be on record that we're pretty well stocked.
So each elementary has one defibrillator. The middle school has one defibrillator. And then high school has one, two, I believe, three defibrillators. The nurses monitor, they do monthly checks of them. They'll maintain the chest sticky, the pads, and then they'll send me an email notification and I'll order the batteries for them. They're all within sides of school and they're all put in strategic areas such as Connie Bean is out by the gymnasium. High school's got one by the gymnasium. And same with the Little Harbor, it's in the main entrance coming in to the left. Dondaro's by the cafeteria. So we put them in strategic areas inside our schools, and they're marked within side our schools throughout the district as well.
Does Lister have one?
I believe, yes, it does. It's in the old main entrance that faces the front of the school.
Yes. And Shamara has one, and there's one at every game.
That one bounces back and forth between the high school and that, yeah.
And, but there's, I did confirm that there's one at every game. So she's on radio, and so she's always available with one.
There's seven district wide.
And there's been trainings as well for them to be used. So the ones that are close to the gymnasium are trained.
And cost center 134 says, it's called health in your book, which is health services as opposed to health education, like his ed and health, health services, which is nursing. It's a small cost center. We probably wouldn't spend much time on it otherwise. But if you were going to go down through the operating budget of health services, they have an AED replacement cycle there, and there are dollars there every year to continue to do the pad replacement that Kenny was mentioning, as well as have an inventory turn on those, so.
Thank you. I know it wasn't on your radar. I just wanted it to be on record.
I wanted to just, I mean, part of the, I mean, Kenny will talk about projects here in a second, but I wanted to call, I'm going to make sure folks knew, although we still have a couple of spaces where we'd like them, we'd like the front entrance to have, the only thing that comes to mind right now is Mantrap, but to have a locked and sealed vestibule with...
Airwalk.
An airwalk, thank you. A managed access and to the extent possible, access through the main office as opposed to, we have certainly, every building is locked. The envelope is locked during the day, and we have secure doorways. But in a couple of cases, we still have doorways that are monitored by camera from remote. So you buzz, you're identified, I know who you are, you come in. But you're actually coming in and voluntarily have to come around the corner to find the main office to be processed in appropriately. There's a couple of spaces like that that we want to fix in the, you know, in the nearest possible term as part of the capital plan. But stepping back to the basics, all of them are secured entrances, all of them are monitored, and all of the buildings are locked. That's not, as you travel around the country, you'd imagine that it was a given.
Be an automatic.
But it's not automatic. It's not always a given. And Kenny makes reference to access control. And even in this last cycle, when the safe grants were pushed out from the state and we had a competitive opportunity, Kenny jumped in and secured grants for the high school and the middle school to extend even further access control to a couple of spaces. Doors that hadn't been, hadn't been equipped with a fob and an access control box that allows you to come and go. And so those were doors that were more likely propped open by people because they were doors that needed to be opened and closed at times. So in this case, we avoid the propping because appropriate people have a fob and now we have units. So we're continuing to monitor and find, it's kind of like going to the university and you find as you walk across campus that there's a path now with pavement, and you think, that was never here before. But somewhere back last year, kids started walking that path, and now they had to pave it. Well, we find that things change over time. And so we're constantly monitoring to upgrade and make changes that fit the lifestyle and the realities of how we're living in these buildings. Sorry to take you away from your, your process. Keep going.
You know, it's an ongoing process. The next slide, we jump into major projects. The next slide, we jump into major projects. Since 2015, this gives you a good insight of what we finished district-wide. Little Harbor, you know, Don Darrow School renovations, Little Harbor outdoor classroom, you know, the peep move, peep playground. We removed that from Don Darrow and reinstalled that over at Little Harbor. Solar projects, as I mentioned earlier, varsity baseball dugouts, Makerspace. Again, major project, athletic field lighting upgrade, the track. The track we timed out very well and it was able to get it done through COVID, which when that time went in lockdown, we didn't have to deal with a lot of people trying to run around and track, which it, it helped us on that one project. Middle school, our chiller number two, paving projects at New Franklin, the bus circle. And we, again, another major infrastructure upgrade in the last three years is mechanical and electrical upgrade to where that school is, is getting 100% of outside air at all times and the building is now fully AC. We jump into another paper with Little Harbor and Lister, Little Harbor was just done this past two summers ago. Digital controls, which is the HVAC computerized system. We did a full upgrade three years ago to all the schools to get us up to the continuity of today's world in mechanicals. And again, as we mentioned earlier, security cameras and access control, which seems to be on, ongoing. And if you haven't been at Porson High School recently, we have the nice, brand-new burgundy and gray maroon bleachers.
They're all finished.
They're all completely finished. We're about a week and a half ahead of schedule, which we were able to get the volleyball team back in for their, end of their season piece. As we come up now, starting, this is in the bouse on the back of your packet book for the capital improvement plan. We have requested through CIP in the next process of about $1.3 million in upcoming pavement projects. It's mainly directed towards Don Darrow and PHS. And expecting that's gonna probably take about a two to three-year process because we have to work at traffic patterns and this is when we'll take the traffic study in 2019 and reevaluate that and look at parking and traffic patterns and student patterns and potential bike racks and whatever is needed for PHS to help fluency the students in and out. Even though we've done some short-term signage and redirecting certain things, but usually when nobody's looking, they, they still drive the direction they choose to drive. We're also in the process of getting ready to hit the webpage pretty soon on the turf field replacement. Tennis courts is also up for this summer. The, the construction drawings are about 90, 95% done. It's taking a little bit longer to get those done because we've had to start there from scratch. We're fortunate with the turf field. When we looked for the engineering firm to do the document, we were able to go with Gale Associates who originally did the project back in 2010. This summer as well, we'll be doing some window refurbishing at Little Harbor, which is mean balances, weights, locks, just to kinda make the windows functional. We've been slowly picking on it, but we're gonna use the additional funds to rehab all the windows through there. Community campus renovation is in full steam of design and process. District-wide roofs also in the back of the packet. I've requested funding over four years through the capital improvement plan of a million dollars. Hopefully to do one section at New Franklin and then rest will shift towards PHS in Don Darrow. Exterior window replacements, as Nathan has informed you before, those will, those funds that were in capital improvement plan, then we'll shift them into ESSRs. We have started working with the architect to get to the design drawing written so we can process that out to bed. Security grades, upgrades, there is funding in 2027 as, as we continue to always earmark funding to continue to increase our needs, upgrade our needs and see where the needs are at that time. Light inefficiencies will be directed towards PHS, looking at the new LED lighting in throughout the gymnasium and the cafeteria at Porson High. The interior upgrades, really cosmetic, looking at paintings, carpets, interior pieces there. And then the other piece also in the FI 27 is the capital athletic complex improvement. Impress box fencing, things like that. That was the last slide.
On that last one, wasn't it at some point that there's AC in the foreign language wing needs of the high school? That's the one wing that doesn't, that's the one area that doesn't have AC? Is that part of upcoming CIP?
So what is not on this piece here, and I talked about the last time, so I have a bid ready to go out to do the retro commissioning of Porson High School. What that means is we're gonna solicit an engineering, for a mechanical engineer from coming to a full evaluation of Porson High School mechanical system, exhaust fans and life safety. High school is now hit 20 years old for their expenditure of their mechanicals. So we've just about hit their life expectancy on that. At that time, we will evaluate and with capital funding, this will be the next round when we go to the CIP plan of increasing AC throughout the high school, not only through foreign language, but then we'll look into support services areas, down to parts of the CTE area and not only, and then also maintaining what we have. So we're gonna look at that as a bigger infrastructure piece. We could put little pieces here and there, but it doesn't fix the problem long-term because then I have to worry about how we're gonna create a maintenance plan and maintain those smaller units when we wanna look at as a bigger picture.
Got it.
So one of the things that's coming that Kenny just alluded to is the CTE will roll up on a 25-year, 20 or 25, 25-year renovation schedule with the state of New Hampshire. Each CTE center has its turn over the years. It's not funded out of the Department of Education. It's funded out of the state's capital budget. Roads and bridges and such. And, and we'll have to have initial proposals in for CTE in, I think it's fiscal '28 and the funding, I think, comes in '29 or '30. Courtney, at some point, as we get closer to that, I'm sure Courtney Richings will make that part of her presentation when she talks to you, but.
Well, that's the same year that we renovated the high school. We doubled that together.
And I think that's what Kenny, that's what Kenny's kind of alluding to is that there's a, there's an investment opportunity coming, which last, last, last I read it through, it's still essentially 75%, 25, 75% state, 25% local. So we figure out our 25% of what CTE is needing, but we can flesh that out and we can tackle things at the high school as well. The CTE portion that really could use some air handling upgrades is right underneath the foreign language lab. At least, at least part of it is.
Yep.
Preschool, childcare, yeah, that.
Yeah.
So all of that coming together, that, we hate to say, oh, by the way, no problem, we'll get to you in 2030, but somewhere in that planning, I think we'll start to see a lot of it take shape. How we can do it cost-effectively and when we get the patient cut, cut open, we can do a lot, a lot of work there for the couple of years. So.
Okay.
Okay, questions? We'll start here. Lisa?
I'm curious, and this may be a small piece of the CIP project, but are we doing anything as we're looking at pavement around bike lanes and bike parking? I mean, we do so many other great things in terms of sustainability, but that piece, I think, is lagging at several schools.
So we have bike racks at all schools.
No, I know, but there's not enough space and there's not always easy bikeable routes into the schools if you're a kid on a bike.
That's city.
Huh?
That's city, though. That's the city. Bike lanes follow the city, not us.
So the bike lanes would come through the traffic and safety.
But once you get onto the school grounds, that's us, isn't it? Well, there's the road bike lanes, then there's like, once you get onto the school parking lot areas, there's not always.
So we will, we will look at the high school as that. We do, I think the main walkway coming in was wide enough. I know we were talking about that on the main roadway coming in. I know with Little Harbor, we renovated the sidewalk and striped it out where one side is walking and one side is a bike as well. The high school is, is we look as a whole, not only do we wanna look at where the bike racks are placed and it's strategically placed, but we also have to get the mop pits under control and get them designated there because they're just parking in the bike rack, which
True.
don't matter to me. I just like to try to give them a home to park, that's all. So we'll look at that as also through the traffic and safety review of the, of the plan that we have in 2019.
So Kenny mentions this 2019 study. Some of you were involved and have been around. In 2019, the low-hanging fruit, the biggest part of that assessment that we tackled was the, the intersection with Lafayette and Andrew Jarvis. So that, that was done. But what still remains is all of the comings and goings in and around the building, and I didn't hear him say it, so I wanted to say aloud. One of the biggest pieces of that is going to be pedestrian walkways through the parking lots because right now we look just like every traditional high school parking lot around. But next gen moving forward, the idea is, you know, you need to make sure that not only is there striping, but medians and breakouts, you need to have spaces so that kids can walk out to their vehicles. And I think biking can certainly be, can certainly be part of that. And it may very well mean some significant changes in traffic patterns around the building. So.
And also bus patterns. We have to look at, we have to look at all our bus loops as well.
Okay, Carrie and then Hope.
I apologize, I have to be at a ZBA hearing later, so I was jumping in and out. I may have missed it, but I was just curious with, in, around sustainability and solar. With increasing utility costs and variable, were those projects grant-funded? Or like, is there some point that we're looking at as a district where we would invest in more and that would offset, or the investment would offset some of our utility costs?
So the elementaries were installed as educational purposes only. Due to the pitch and location to the roofs, we're just about maxed out because of the engineering firms. Depending on where your layouts are, you know, we're not gonna get our bigger bang for our bucks. So when we looked at the 2014, when we had the grant that popped up and we jumped in with the city and did the Midbury Water Plant, we actually did a 20-year agreement at zero net cost to the city of Porson. So right now, that, whatever we generate for cost savings is to go back to the vendor who originally saw this, sold that to us. If I believe right, at year 10, the city has the right to then buy that contract out and then take the benefits of the solar from the NRO. So I think right now we're at our max unless we start looking at ground arrays, which at our sites, we don't have that ground coverage to go ahead and put another additional groundway or roof ray up on our roadside. We're just about where we are as maxes. At the high school, we used all the 1956, 58 buildings, which could handle, the steel structure then was designed for heavier load. As we talked about the roof garden at the middle school, part of that was kinda cut out of the project. So now when we had the, when we do that rooftop garden, at one point was the entire cafeteria roof. Now it's a section, it's only above the stage. Now, when they enter through the store, they gotta walk all the way across the other part of the building because I just don't have that, that, that steel structure in place.
So windmills are the best option, you're saying?
There is an ongoing conversation. Kenny and I have been invited a couple of times over the last couple of years where the city has continued to explore the opportunities that might exist somewhere in the city. And I know that the schools fall into that conversation, they, you know, because we've been pulled in and they take a look. And so I, it's, I think to the extent that we, that we can offer and be, and participate, offer up space or support or, or be, or participate at all in that, we certainly will because thankfully they are, they are calling every time they recycle that conversation and talk again about where they could and what it might be.
I think it's just the budget overview, and I was totally kidding about windmills.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not objecting to anything.
But make it all as noisy as New Franklin. That was the goal, right?
It's one of New Franklin.
The, you know, just looking at the budget increases and that's like a big chunk and you know that well, but it's just sort of like, what's the breakpoint of like, we need to have something else or build, you know? And it, and it sounds like you guys are all on it, but.
There is, and even on, on the energy side, you know, since, since taking over in '04, you know, we, we actually kind of plateaued about four years ago or so in our energy, where now we're, we were gonna start increasing our usage between all the mechanical upgrades and lighting upgrades and the digital control upgrades where we, I can control all the building schedules just by the click of the buttons. We know when our buildings are unoccupied, like Christmas break just came happen. We, we didn't run our buildings for half that break, you know? But we just put them into night mode and let everything kinda rest, but stay into a mode where it still protected our building. I mean, New Franklin's incident was just.
Which had nothing to do with New Franklin.
It had nothing to do with. It was just, it was just an accent that just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I meant the noise at New Franklin, like the hum, you know, I was thinking windmills have the hum.
We look at energy on a daily basis.
Yeah.
As, as a district.
Thanks. Hope?
So I have a couple of questions, but one, I'll just jump off that real quick. I was curious about Little Harbor because it doesn't have solar panels. Is that because of the picture or when they did their renovation?
That was because there was concerns of the snow load that could be held on that because of where the pitch rubber roof is. It's, well, I don't know why we built flat roofs in New England, but solar works very well.
I know we ran out of money.
On that type, on that size of a facility.
Okay.
But it was looked at.
My other questions are pertaining to PHS. So maybe it's in S for dollars or I'm seeing it somewhere else in security upgrades or something. But I thought we had talked about that connecting piece that we were going to build for security purposes between.
The security gate?
No, well, I guess.
So the crossover in the back?
Yeah.
Has been access controlled now.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we installed access control as part of this grant. So teachers can go back and forth.
With no problem.
With no problem.
So that did get done.
Yeah, we, so we did that through access control.
Okay.
It just came into, when we look at the gates, then life safety comes into play. I have to put power, I have to put mechanisms with a chain link fence and a push bar, even though it's locked. You know, you can still stick things and poop it, pop it open and it just was not functional. So we looked at the access control.
We never got a report back or if we did, I'm mistaken. We had talked about the corridor and.
I'm still carrying that in ESSR because we're gonna find, maybe we'll find a way still.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but both, both to secure the access so that it can be more free across, but also to create a secured outdoor, it's not pretty space, but a secured outdoor space so that people can step outside and take a breath and, and be outside for a period while they read or, you know, what have you. So that's in your, it's in your ESSR plan right now.
So that leads to my next question of beyond like a step-out place because I keep going back to what problems did we have in COVID and are we solving for those problems? And the biggest problem we had at PHS, our kids could not get back in the building because there was not enough cafeteria space to have lunches. And inevitably, we ended up doing the split schedule that nobody wanted to do for a year and it's where we ended up landing. So I'm just curious, are we, have we scouted prices for like proper building of an outdoor seating area for not just a step-out small area, but like actually having lunch outside space? I know that they have the places by the anchor, but I mean, like off the cafeteria. Have we ever priced that out? I, I brought that up with ESSR multiple times because that is a space that you could build out.
We've continued to hold dollars for infrastructure, but I don't think yet we have pricing on what that would look like out back. I mean, one of the concerns is that you'd end up, how do we do it without building, without building another building? Because what you really just want is you wanna secure.
Knock down that wall, start with.
You wanna secure, you wanna secure building, but you want, but you don't, you wanna secure building, but no roof on it. Do you know what I mean? Like it's, you, you don't wanna just, you don't wanna just have a patio out off the backside so that folks can just go out at lunch.
So maybe it's not outdoor seating, maybe you knock down the wall and you're just expanding the cafeteria and, and closing in more. But the, the, the question that I had pitched multiple times and told, oh, we're getting numbers. So it sounds like that's never actually really happened, is that to explore, how can we expand our cafeteria seating? And there is.
So now we're talking about a construction project to, to grow the cafeteria. Let's, we'll get numbers on that. What we've been talking about before was outdoor seating and outdoor patio space. While we're also talking about securing the front door and worried about security outside. So right now, that hasn't been a priority to figure out how to just pave over the pavement and put patio stones out there for seating because then we gotta secure it. And if we secure it, we're talking about building walls. But if what we wanna do is because of the concerns for, for the cafeteria, we simply wanna do a, a construction project to expand the footprint of the building. It will, it will have an impact on parking, so we'll have to figure out offsets for parking.
Well, there's not parking there. There's no parking.
What is there will have to take up the space of some other parking because the space doesn't just sit idle. The space that we were using is space that we use as a loading dock, the bus, I mean, there's a lot of things that we use with the space. So we'll absolutely add that to the list of things that we do as construction project.
That would be great. So, I mean, we've talked, we've talked about it over and over and if it got
Yeah.
defined as outdoor seating, then so be it. But I think the real solve is how can we make sure that, God forbid, we have a problem again. We, we, it's not because of lunch that we can't get our kids back into the building, you know?
Margot?
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I have a couple of questions on solar since it came up. Have there been any discussions with the city on a partnership at community campus with so much acreage, some of which is not buildable for putting solar?
That, my knowledge, not yet, no. Because I think that building is just so fresh in the city's parameters at the moment. I, I think Todd's still looking, I know we sit in programs, I've sat on the rec study. We, we just sent on another rec study with the firm. We just had a review of that last week. But I don't think this time that has been a topic of discussion yet. But I don't think this time that has been a topic of discussion yet. It's probably on the back burner.
Okay.
Somewhere, but it also with any ground array, it comes into is you can build all you want, is how do we get the power out?
Right, always the challenge.
Challenge.
Right, okay. So that was my first question. The second is when Phil Davis presented from the middle school, he mentioned that the sustainable flooring in the Stokel Commons is breaking down.
Yes.
I didn't see that when I looked on 188.
From the beginning.
I was over the corner with him chatting, isn't it? We did the turf field, yes.
Yeah.
So we've had some, the metal construction 2013. You have radiant floor on one part and then you stop and you go to a cold concrete floor. So we've always had some imperfections of floor tile that we've repaired three times so far over many years. So right now we're working with a couple of different flooring companies to kind of review and really think about is what is, what is a longer term repair? Because of that, that hot and cold flush that where we are coming into concrete is just not sustainable for this 20 by 20 linoleum type floor.
And he said no wa, you can't use water on it? Is that what he was saying?
No, we wash it all the time. We wash it, but it, you can't protect it like V C T, put wax on it.
I see.
So that, so you can't, you don't have those extra protective measures. So those are the, those are the, the hidden figures. We have one, two, and there's three key areas. There's one out by the, the resource officer, one over by the beginning of the calf, and then the second one over by the lunch area of the calf. You can see where we have yellow tape set up at the moment. So that's, that is a bigger project than what people think is we like to try to do things once.
And do it right, right.
You know, 15 times.
So that's why it's not in the maintenance budget for 188.
Operational pieces.
Okay.
Is right now if it becomes bigger than an operational piece, then I'll look at putting it as part of the projects in C I P land, or I'll talk to Nathan, the doc, at the end of the year if there's some additional funding to try to offset that.
Okay.
Right now that's just sustainable.
Okay.
Nathan, can you just review for people kind of what that, where's that tipping point? We go from like operational budget to this is worthy of C I P. When do we get into, what dollar figures do we start to get into? And I know it's not a hard number, but.
I mean, I mean, an operating dollar that's less than $100,000 routinely, probably, well, that's not fair. I mean, I think if we saw something that was over 50,000 a year, we'd probably, but big, but C I P, I want to say C I P's number is 50,000 as a stated parameter. Generally projects are 100,000 or more that you see there. So, so a roofing project, you know, paving project, all of which are in the 200 to 500,000 range. We do, we do though in our every, by, by design or by desire, we have roughly a million dollars every third year that we have kind of falling in, fallen into over time. Maybe it was 500,000 every two years or I don't know what, but now it's about a million bucks each third year. And Kenny does stick some smaller dollar things in there. So subflooring projects, we put 25 or 30,000 in a flooring. And so some of those things, but that's as a one-time project. If it was an ongoing maintenance, then it would rise probably.
Yeah, because I didn't see it in 188 under cost center 430. That's what I was confused about. So, so long as it's being addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I'm fine. My, my third question was more like a request. I, I feel like the public is not clear on the turf is being replaced because it's reached end of life and the safety standards have improved and we are stepping in with it. So I've heard some comments like, why are we spending so much?
So the life expectancy of a turf field is roughly about 12 to 15, 10 to 15 years, give or take. We're on year, we're hitting year 12 right now. We saw in last year's testing, 2021, that our G max in a couple of strategic areas really skyrocketed. Still within the threshold, but it's like, all right, let's take the funding that we have in 2025 and let's shift it up further. So we don't get into where we have to shut the field down for that.
Which I agree with.
When we did our testing this year, those numbers that skyrocketed dropped back down because we increased our maintenance on that field as well.
I see.
So it's also, you know, having the first turf field in the city of Porser, it's also a learning curve in how we maintain this. And we actually increased the maintenance of the grooming weekly or biweekly, which dropped those numbers down. So now we're learning that field as well. So we went ahead and still proceeded with it's time to go ahead in year 12 to go ahead and replace it. And like I said, as we've also, as we look into the process of changing, not only depending on what we decide for the infill, we're also going to install a shock pad under this field as well, which will just give an additional softness to that field. It's not going to prevent them from getting hurt, but it's going to help reduce the, the option, you know, them of getting hurt. But that field, all that pad will also allow us for another change up. So when we look at this field again, another 10 or 12 years, that shock pad will stay underneath. And then we'll put another carpet on top with, with the infill in place.
So, and I agree with all of that. My request is how can we make sure the public understands?
So let's, let's start with, Kenny, can you go back to, you were talking about the testing and I know you know exactly what you're talking about. But what was the testing we did and what does that testing tell us?
So we do G max testing, which is ground force concussion.
Yeah.
And I, we've been talking about creating a website for facilities so we can start posting that G max testing every year. So at least it tells publicly. We do have a individual every year who costs, who sends us a letter of rights and knows. And we send them all our fertilizing bills and we send them all our G max testing as well. So we have that is, is for public knowledge if they would like to ask for it. But we're looking at an alternative set is let's look at creating a facility page off the school website and then we can put in the, the G max testing or I can put in a water test or I can put in, you know, the solar panels so people can see what's, what's going on as well.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Can I just add to that? Because I would also say there's confusion around the tennis courts as well. It's like we're doing tennis courts and turf fields? And like I think a lot of people or a lot of our residents, at least the ones that have approached me about it, do not understand that like, well, when we got new pickleball downtown that you guys wanted, that took away the school's tennis courts. Because there was really never a discussion at that city council when they were bringing about the pickleball, that the fact that, hey, wait a minute, these are used by the school and now what's the school going to do? And it kind of became like, oh, now we don't have tennis courts. We have no home field. Go find tennis courts, Nathan, right? And rent tennis courts. So I don't think there was good information put out. So I, I just wonder if like, maybe we could partner Nancy and see if like Deaklin could maybe even put a spotlight in their newsletter about some of the school updates and how that integrates with what the city's doing as well and how sometimes what the city does impacts what we have to do. Just so there's some understanding about the partnerships and how things work and we're not just spending costlessly, you know, of like, oh, let's just redo all sports.
How the pickleball thing unrolled, I guess they didn't realize is that we needed six regulation reports.
Right.
And so they went and did that process.
And that the four that we had at the high school were built in, what, 89? We've been very, we've been very patient and we've deferred, you know.
And people don't understand the rent cost that we had to go and find fields to meet the regulations. So there was additional cost to us, right? So.
We've went out for engineering services. We've hired a company. We've, we've been in a lot of talks. Preliminary designs are done. We're in the final construction drawing now. So also with just probably right after the turf, it hits the street forbidding the tennis courts will, will go out as well for that. Projected renovation will be this summer for them to have playable courts, spring of 2024.
So I think like our community might know that or some of that or still have questions. But the broader community that's like, how are you spending my tax dollars? I think it would be helpful if some, we could partner some way to get some education out there around it.
Mainly too, sorry for not raising my hand, but the one thing that our schools have, that turf is the one place our entire community uses.
Yes, it's not just a high school.
This is the perfect bridge for us to say, this is for all's benefit, not just the school. Because they think they're thinking, you know, you've got this huge budget and you're going to direct this much.
Sure.
Right. It's more of a, I, I completely support it. I think it's well researched. I just want to, it's an opportunity for better transparency in how we communicate.
So the turf field will be done this summer, correct? And the tennis courts for the spring?
Yes, tennis courts is a bigger project. We have to go, we're actually adding two more courts. So there's also some blasting and some ledge and all the other good stuff to get to.
So we'll have six courts?
At, at the high school.
At the high school. So we don't have to rent out any more courts. Six courts is enough. Okay.
Six courts, yes.
Okay, great.
Six courts is what the N H I A A specifies for a, for a contest.
Yeah.
It's at community campus.
Two, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
They're not in good shape.
Those will look a lot better than ones, well, we talked about that because you also, you also own a set at New Franklin that I'm sure there are neighbors who are using it for tennis, but, but.
We like to ride bikes in it.
I'm not a tennis enthusiast, but I think the school gets more use out of it as a simply contained space where they can play dodgeball or they can do other things inside the.
Play basketball, yeah.
And basketball. So I think that's something we're going to have to confront in the near term. And what are we doing with that?
Pickleball, get rid of tennis.
If it's going to be a tennis court again, it's going to make some work.
It's supposed to be either.
There's all, there's other alternatives depending on what, and again, we're back to depending on what the city does. What the city does with its different spaces, what do they need? Do they need our field more than they need our court? Does the court need to be basketball, tennis, what can?
And then some, a lot of those discussions are also in this new rec study that we're doing in the process right now with Todd Henley that we're reviewing of looking at all facilities, grounds, spaces, green spaces and, and how can we, you know, better coordinate use or grow into as well right now.
Kenny, I always appreciate how clean your presentations are. It's very like, this is what's coming, this is what we've done. Like I wish all reports could be like that, right? This is what we're doing in the schools, this is where we're going, like it's great.
We do a lot behind the scenes.
Your, your team does a ton for, for the size team you have.
I know Kenny's got questions, but I wanted to go back as in his slides, he kicked right by. I mean, I know in the interest of time and he's ready to move on to whatever's going on, but I'm, you don't have to go back to Kenny. But he said, under the facilities department, responsible for cleaning and maintaining all municipal school building facilities and grounds. Well, like, he's got at least two shifts every day, multiple teams, they're doing building checks on the weekend. New Franklin, I think you've already heard this once before, New Franklin was discovered when it was because head custodian, Eddie O'Connell stopped to do a building check, somewhat, somewhat anticipated and routine, but also gratuitous because he's that guy would always make sure that he was checking on his house. Kenny mentions snow removal, clear and remove snow and ice. We're, we're clearing 19 acres. Well, that's Kenny and his maintenance guys. You know, the maintenance guys who are also down here maintaining school playgrounds, athletic fields and surrounding grounds. Well, your custodial force is really largely indoor, taking care of cleaning and housekeeping, custodial support for the building, the bathrooms, all of the surfaces. It's Kenny and his four maintenance guys. And I've been in other districts. I'm just shocked. These, these guys do all the grounds, they're doing all the prep at the athletic complex at the high school, they're painting the fields, they're, you know, it's.
They're setting up for graduation.
Setting up for graduation.
He does it all.
Except for this year, I said I'm not setting up. I already told two other guys that showed up because I, my daughter, I have a daughter graduating this year. One, three down and one to go.
Two thoughts on recruiting custodians, I mean.
That is a very hard process. We, we have it on, and we have it on the city website. We've, we've gotten on one thing. My biggest piece I've been able to get hits from is indeed, I think that's where I've ordered, I've been able to hire my last six custodians there.
And we're competitive with salary, right?
We are, we will be. It will be. The contract is agreed to, we're just waiting for the process to be signed and all that. But we are still within the parameters of some of the other school districts or more than some of the other school districts. Well, we're in less than some of the other school districts, but we are.
But are we competitive with like other jobs around or is there?
No, we won't be.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, you know, you got landscapers that get probably hired at $25 an hour. They work days, you know, things like that.
But we do have a good benefits package and it's consistent. And we'll find work for you and you don't get laid off and you don't worry about a down week and nobody furloughs you for three, you know what I mean? So there are some benefits that people do find. And I think that the collective bargaining agreement that you hopefully will see before the end of this month, maybe it'll be next month. But it's, that's coming and it's two years in arrears. I mean, it's really, it's been a long time coming. That's going to make the rate more competitive and, and hopefully that, that helps to buoy the benefits package and the other, some of them intangibles that, that are.
Are you in the advertisement, Miss Nina? You're doing the pitch.
Anyway, I wanted to, yeah, I interrupted you having a question. I apologize. I didn't mean that.
Carrie? No, I, I just wanted to go back to energy while you're here and I think it's a broader conversation. But I'm just looking at what Nathan, you provided tonight. So the, it's the number four increase. So salary first, benefits, can't do anything about those. Contracts are done. Out of district tuition is third and then energy increases is four. And so that's the, I, I know it's not going to happen for this year, but I feel like it should be a a focal point because I don't thank any of us for see energy costs going down in the next, you know, five, 10 years.
Before he answers, let me tell you a little of the background. So Kenny made a comment earlier and I'll re, I'll restate. We've done great work in terms of energy efficiency in our systems, our mechanicals, our motors, our engines, you know what I mean? The, the, the lighting, the, you know, the choice of bulb and ballast and the tools. So the work that was done at your elementary schools, the renovation at Little Harbor and Don Darrow and the continued work that's going on in New Franklin, all of that came about as a result of an energy efficiency study. And those costs were largely driven by the efficiencies that could be derived from making upgrades and changes. So the energy budget's already in a much better place than it was or could be. The city does the competitive bidding for us and I certainly appreciate that. And so when I tell you that the rates have gone up, it's not because our consumption has changed. You've seen it at home as, as have we. They, they did what they thought was the best and I don't doubt it for 30 seconds. I mean, I wasn't there with them, so I can't, I can't, I can't tell you what the process looked like. But I know having done it in the past that it can be a fickle market. They locked down our electricity rates changed not till October. And in that case, they had a six, 6.86 cent contract that has been in place for a number of years, that pops to 11.4 cents. That's a, that's the 66% jump. Your budget didn't jump 66% because it's only on the commodity side. It's on the supply side. The distribution from your utility is ever source in this case is staying pretty, ever source, ever source.
Yeah.
It's staying pretty level. On the gas side, same thing happened. They negotiated and that hits us for the entirety of this coming heating season starts July 1 or July, somewhere in July of 23. And off the top, I can't tell you the, the actual metrics, but it was about a 41% increase. So essentially everything in that increase that you see of 227,000
Yep.
is, is anticipated rate impact from those two contracts. So I, I mean, I, I'm all, I'm all ears and, and excited to tackle whatever comes. But this place has been pretty much committed for a decade to energy efficiency and and this was simply, you know, an uncontrollable commodity jump, which hopefully will recover some. I mean, I don't know that we'll get back.
It's the contract term, not necessarily just the constant increase.
Sustainability plays work.
We actually started looking at energy back in probably 2007, 2008 with Tom Martin. And looking at condensing boilers and how do we do our building? And then in 2012 is when we put an R P for energy conservation and had all these companies. That's how we went with E E I. New Franklin was the model of boilers and, and low hanging fruits and the likes. And then we used that model and then started with the elementaries when we started in 2015 with Little Harbor where the second floor actually was 50, 50, half it was gas heat and half it was electric heat. So we, that's where we started really using that model back in 2012. It's gone right through and that's when we backtracked to New Franklin now for that energy efficiency units and all that. And that'll also be part of the retro commission of the Porser High School is how to, yeah, we're going to increase. We're going to look at replacing all the units, but how do we look at more efficiency in, in the unit? Energy recovery wells or, or H R U's or E R Vs, you know, how are we going to look at that as well as a building? That's, that building is about 350,000 square feet. That, that takes a lot of energy. So we'll be looking at that as our placeholder when we start really looking at the next energy line. Besides trying to do that low hanging fruit that we can on a day-to-day basis.
When did the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So the work with, with E I started in 14 or more recent?
2012.
12, okay.
So that's when we put out the R F Ps out. That was also part of when the No Child Left Behind Act piece came into play. We had to do the elementaries, which when we rented a little, renovated Little Harbor to move central office over here. And so we started that year, at the end of that year, we put out the R F P. I think it actually went out probably 2013.
So since we're doing A, B, C and 1, 2, 3 and do re mi, I should just, E E I is energy, energy efficient investments. That's the, the builder or the contractor that we've been working with in a multi-phased effort with the elementary.
So is, sorry to keep pushing dates, but so was that, that was the implementation? When was, was the study around that same time or like just before that?
We go to the, we did, it actually was an elementary feasibility study is what we did at us. study is what we did at us. We looked at all the elementaries. It was part of the Doran Whittier Scope Project as well. We hired another firm that came in and did a full study. You know, what would it cost to renovate New Franklin? What would it be cost to, you know, build a brand-new building?
Yeah.
And we looked at a lot of the costs of renovation, we did probably for about, I think, 40 to 45% less than what they projected. Just when we put out the RFP to know what they, what they were looking for. And we took that as our model and did it, went into that road.
2012 and Kenny had a full head of black hair then?
Yes.
Tell me more.
I mean, those projects there, we were doing $5 million a summer in nine weeks. 15, 16, 17, 18. Let's look those schools around.
I mean, I guess, and my thought is just like that, just as we do strategic planning or we do things on regular intervals, like this seems like something that should also be a regular interval. And I know that's terrible to think about going through all that pain again, but like solar arrays of change, like all of the price points for some of these things have changed. Technology has changed.
Yes.
So.
I know the sustainability committee is, is working really hard on all that.
Yeah, I mean, we got light.
And that's, and that's city.
City committee.
Citywide, yeah.
But we.
Yeah, we have representation.
Yeah, but they're calling, they're calling us, we're collecting data. I know because we've been trying to get information about the school buses. That's been, that's been a tweet. Kate, Kate's been looking for that now for.
And we sent them some energy costs so we can try to reduce the carbon footprint. I know they're doing a study on that as well.
Yeah. And they have the climate action plan coming up that they're just, they just hired and launched. So it's all gonna be part of that, which hopes to be done.
So what I'm hearing you say is that I shouldn't think of that as an adjustable cost because the city negotiates that and that we don't. Is that correct?
And that's been going on for so long.
Bigger body power as a whole.
Yeah, they, they package us all together. So I can't change that rate. I mean, obviously we could take additional steps to turn some lights off and change consumption, but.
Yeah. I mean, and I don't, I know that's not my field, but like lights that automatically turn off and like things like that.
We've done that all throughout the elementary.
Yeah, all of that's already.
High school has that as well. Middle school has that as well. We look at, you know, daylight harvesting if the light, you know, depends on how the sun is, you know, whether these lights will actually dim down automatically. Demmer switches. We look at, there's new EVO kits out where if you go down Don Darrow hallway, if there's no action within like five or 10 minutes, they go down to 50%. Two minutes down to 25%. And then after that, they dump out. So we're looking at all those, those measures where it's, their touch rate.
All the things I need to do in my house that I haven't done.
You don't have to touch.
Do you contract it?
But I would just say too, around that work is that with EEI, I mean, I don't know, because we worked with EEI. I remember walking in to New Franklin and Mike Davey, who's, who I worked with in some of our projects. I'm like, what are you doing here? And, but it's, but it's a, they come in, they do that initial work, they basically figure out where all your inefficiencies are. And then build, depending on how you do it, you guys didn't bond though, right? It was not bonding.
No, Mike, Mike proposed that, but the city did it themselves.
City has the ability to self-finance. We had to bond. And so we bonded on it. But it was like, here's a, here's now a 10-year project to, that will partially pay for itself through the efficiency. So, so I mean, a lot of those things, whereas whether it's LED lighting or other things, it sounds like we're well into. So there's less of the savings available to us.
High school is a bigger piece. We mean, even that auditorium a few years back was just taking a bulb and putting LED bulbs that would fit the demer system. So that took a little work and time, but now there's, you know, the auditorium's all LED at the high school.
And that's not to say that we shouldn't continue to constantly be looking at how we become more efficient. I think some of that buffer that you'd think is in there might not be in there.
I just appreciate you going down this rabbit hole with me and I understand now.
So the good, the good news is also bad news. I mean, the good news is the low-hanging fruits that been harvested.
Are done.
Yeah. They've, I think, everything that, everything that could be done fairly inexpensively, quickly and easily, they, they did that and then some already. Doesn't mean that there's not more there. And certainly as technologies are changing and time passes, there's more. It's funny because I think right now, every time we talk about energy in general, we're still looking at trying to wrap up some of the finishing touches at New Franklin to match the work that's been done at Don Darrow and Little Harbor. So that right now has been kicked out on the CIP to.
Twenty-five and seven.
Yeah. So, and that, and that, it satisfies, it's, some of it's energy related, others of it are just, you know, updating for the passage of time and, and some code compliance things that need to be tackled. And you just don't want to do them until you're, you know, you're ripping the place apart because they're pretty disruptive, some of the things that we want to do, so.
I know people have been in the district longer than me. We have our historians here. But, I mean, I will say Kenny, I've got kids that's gone all the way through now. I think every time we have any kind of renovation project or something, you guys come in with the lens of like, how can we be more sustainable? How can we be more responsible with dollars and, you know, the environment? I mean, I appreciate that about your team, that you guys take that approach on every project you do.
Many more projects to come down the road.
I'll go next if everybody's all set. I just have a few questions. Joey and Simon's mentioned last week that more classroom space at New Franklin would be desirable.
So as we looked at, so just like the elementary, so when we looked at New Franklin with, with Benwell Architects and EEI, we look at security, for instance, you know, the main entrance, you gotta go into the school and you can go where, you know, versus where you're supposed to. So we've looked at them as a different lens to a point, is we had the architects go ahead and summarize the potential areas for additions. One would be the back cove vault back, which will allow us to do the front-end renovation, which then just close that off. We also looked at the potential of the flagpole on the grass area, bumping out two more classrooms that way as well. Not necessary classrooms, it could be the support service wing, it could be, you know, an arts classroom, whatever it may be. So we, no different than Don Darrow, we also looked at Don Darrow of adding two more classrooms outside the kindergarten wing down by, on the backside of the building. So we want to make sure that when we have the architects come in, that we look at the building as a whole and as a future whole, depending on where the additions or renovations may need, so that we can at least start that conversation when the funds do arise or are needed or solicited through CIP for that time. We do have the plans.
Okay.
Tentatively.
Switching gears here, I always admire the gardens at Portsmouth High School. And those are maintained by students and teachers, is that correct?
Yes.
When my kids were there, that's how it was. And they're gorgeous.
Yes.
And so that will continue?
So we're working with, with the high school group, you know, the stuff that Kim McQuinchi, I believe.
Eco Club.
Eco Club's gonna take over that as well. And then we've been working with Sam Tumberelli in how to do the other parts of the grounds, which is a challenging piece to.
I'm sure it is.
To maintain as we figure out between the two bodies of, and how do, how do we get it done?
My, my son does Special Olympics at Exeter High School, so every spring we go there, once a week. And, you know, that's such a beautiful building. I mean, it's, that's really a beautiful building. But they have like no landscaping. There's no landscaping. And you look, you know, I have to drive around the back to drop them off and everything. And it's just, it's so, it's too bad, you know? And I think about how beautiful Portsmouth High School is in the spring and they really, they do a great job.
Kenny, why don't we eat anytime? This is plenty of weed.
Did we start, did I start stiping Sam on that work? Can we help?
I can't. I don't answer that.
I don't know. I'm just saying, I'm just curious about whether.
It's beautiful.
I know.
As a former neighbor, I used to be, he's got a green thumb. And it was like everything around his house is gorgeous.
And I believe there's a lot of the class projects a few years back, six, seven years ago.
There was Garden Club too.
Yeah.
But probably not enough, enough of the.
He was out there during the summer.
I know one year it was called PHS Landscape Makeover. I have one of the shirts hanging in my office where they raised, I want to say, between the two years, probably about $100,000. Put it in the brick walkways and the benches and the big granite, big rock out front with PHS and the lighting. So they've done tremendous. It's just now, how do we?
How do you maintain it?
Just maintain it. There's a lot.
It is work.
There's a lot of work.
I have another question about, oh, yeah, this is going back a few years and I think this is a mute conversation, but bulletproof glass in our schools, especially, you know, if an intruder got in and was trying to get into the office and had a gun, let's say, and, you know, nothing, it wouldn't penetrate. Or all the doors as you, and we talked about that a few years back, but I think it was cost prohibitive.
Well, there's a few things. Cost always plays a role in the film. It's a 3M film. It's, you put it on and it deters them from one window to the next. It falls back to life safety. You know, when we come in and we look at our, how do we enter our buildings? And sometimes how do we vent the smoke out of a situation? Let's just say a fire starts in the foyer. You know, we need to break some of those windows open to vent out the air. So when we look at each site as a known, we had the fire marshals back then, at that time, they wouldn't give us the blessing. Not saying it won't change now because there's different, you know, different products out there now. There's, there's changes. And as I said in the beginning, when I, when we had pass that come in last week and do some walkthroughs, we did, we walked all the buildings for about four hours last, last week to kind of give them an idea of where we are and what we want. We did talk about film. And that will be another discussion with, with a local fire marshal because we talked about the climbing entrance. You know, you talk about the library in the middle. You know, there's other areas, not only just that school, but, you know, high school's the same way or in elementary. How do we, how do we find that happy medium where we can kind of get what we want and then they get what they want?
Okay.
I was gonna say really quick, just for people at home who watch. So when we, when we talk, because we're in the midst of talking about security stuff earlier, and I know everybody here knows, but when we talk life safety, we're talking fire, fire-related issues. So, and fire-related code and making sure that both our security stuff doesn't violate that.
And my final question is, can you just, Nathan and Kenny, update us on the progress made at community campus for Lister Academy? I know you talked about it briefly last week, but I know it was in the paper where, you know, the city had a work session about, you know, converting the Sherbin School to affordable housing. So if you could just give us an update, that'd be great.
So we're meeting, at this point, we're meeting essentially every week with the design team. Today, we met with the engineering team as well. They've done a current, a current conditions analysis assessment. Some of the good news is that the existing building has, excuse me, boiler plant, you know, heating, it has a ventilation system, rooftop units, et cetera. All of that seems to be functional, in place, and we'll retain that. They'll do some actual testing before we're, before we're getting in, before we seriously get into this. They'll do testing on the air movement and on the water supply. But given what was there before, it's reasonable that everything is working, has been working. And so we'll tap into all the mains and all the systems. We won't have to put those in or replace those. So it, that's a, that's a plus in our, or a minus, if you will, in terms of what it would cost us, you know, what we can do. They, they actually will, they found that in the space, they put in LED upgrades in the last couple of years. So they'll harvest all that, they'll retain all that. We'll put that on the shelf and we'll put it back in. These units that they will pull out won't help in a classroom because the classroom ceilings, the height of the ceilings would be too high. You'll have, you've seen them, the kind of the hanging up-down, what do they call it?
Like scotch and lights.
Yeah, they, you know, it's a, anyway.
It'll be different kind of.
I know what you're talking about.
You get what I'm talking?
Shoots the light up and it flashes back down, et cetera. The old up-down.
Direct lighting.
I think they call it up-down, actually.
Pendulum lights.
So pendulum, you know, the pendant that'll be hanging down. Anyway, but in the smaller spaces, in the offices, even in, you know, breakouts, closets, the things like that, we have all of those existing fixtures that we won't have to purchase. So we'll be able to reuse those. So engineering has done that. They've looked at the electrical, they've looked at the plumbing. Our design continues to march along. We'll, we'll meet one more time, I think, with staff, just to loop back on some of the conversations about how we lay out the facilities in their, in their classrooms and what the common spaces look like. But we've met with folks that will be in the office and they've verified and grown comfortable with the layouts there. So our next move is connecting with the city to try to determine how we go about identifying a construction management partner who would then work with our design team. And we can start putting plans together so we can move toward construction. You refer to last Thursday night's conversation the city council had with representation from the Porcell Housing Authority about what might happen at the property we're currently living in. I've, I've asked on behalf of the school department and we'll wait and see the conversation, but we anticipate now that our work could be pushed out to bid and we could have construction partners ready to do work. But it's a great project to be done this winter. It's an indoor project as opposed to asking it to be done in the summertime or in the fall when construction companies have lots of competitive work and they can be outdoors. This is a nice, substantial project that they can do indoors in the winter. All of the feedback from staff and students is that us pushing to, to make that happen for January is not, they wouldn't advocate for that. None of them really are interested in moving midway through the year. And so we probably will give the direction to the bidding process that we want to be in by the following June. So that as school wraps up in the 23-4 fiscal cycle of the school year, as that wraps up in June, the building will be ready, the space that is fit out of community campus and we'll be able to move over. That will help because we anticipate special ed administration from central office, Jeanette and her team, she'll be moving, as will the leadership from Lister and then the classrooms and all of those programs. And it would be a great time for them to do that at the end of June before the 4th of July and extended school year starts, which is a very busy time for the special ed teams through the summer. So, but that also will leave the Lister team an opportunity to be in and out through the summer months and getting set up and acclimating to it and being ready. Because part of what'll have to happen is the, you know, when you start a new school year is the, is the norming effort of figuring out what the community and culture will be like in that new space with, you know, all of the, the impacts that that will have. So the question to the city is, by extension to the housing authority, if things continue down a path like they seem to be as was described in the article from that meeting, can we stay resident in the space until June of '24 while the fit out is done over the course of the, call it the 23-4 school year? Because we're already going to suffer some impacts because our neighbors upstairs, our preschoolers who sleep and take naps and a regular construction cycle probably isn't going to work to be good neighbors, especially now with jackhammering concrete because we have to lay new, new sewer, you know, new sanitary pipes, et cetera. So we'll be, we'll be potentially facing second shift and weekend work. And to the extent that we can kind of limit that and make it attractive to the, to the contractors that would be involved, the better. Because we don't want this to become premium work all across the board. So that may be more than you wanted, but is that, I mean, that's kind of the path that we're on. I think we're gonna have, we already have a pretty good design. You guys have seen the preliminary on it. There's been more nuancing of it. We'll have a schematic design by the end of the month and we'll have construction documents, two more months maybe?
Yeah.
Some more meetings. And the biggest thing now is we gotta get a partner in that can help us with putting a real estimate on it. We have, we expect to have, oh, I should just say this because people come back to you guys. So the CIP is being introduced. CIP was considered by planning board and was approved. And what our plan of action is right now, the $1.5 million that we've already been authorized to spend on the windows at Don Darrow and Little Harbor, we're gonna do that instead with ester funds. And we're going to ask the city council to repurpose that $1.5 million and give us the authority to spend it at Lister. In the CIP this year, we've added another $2 million to add to that. And we expect that when we go to city council and ask for the authorization, it'll be for the full amount. But we, and what they, we certainly want to go in with the best number, the best information we can. I have spoken to the city manager and asked her to, you know, let anybody know who knows, tomorrow night when we present the CIP to the city council, we will, I will suggest to them that they expect to have a public hearing on February 6, I think, and then vote the CIP adoption on March 6. I, I don't believe at this point that we're going to have anything better for a number than that $2 million that's in there before March 6. I could come up with different numbers, but it's not going to be any more substantiated or defensible than the $2 million we've got now, although we're getting closer and closer and closer. What I'll, what I'll suggest, and it won't make everybody happy, but it'll, the truth, when we come back for authorization of the bond authorization to go ahead and commit the funds by going out to bid, et cetera, then we will have real numbers. Because we'll have a construction management partner on team working with the, with the design team, looking at the plans and putting together some numbers that are meaningful. But I don't, I don't expect that before the 6th of March. I just don't think our process is gonna move fast enough to get there.
Does the city know that we're thinking of not vacating the building until June of '24?
It was not part of the conversation last Thursday night, but the city manager and I have spoken and she's taken that on our behalf to the ongoing conversation with the Porcell Housing Authority. But, but I think the sense is, and I don't want to speak for anybody, so I'm just, but from the little conversations I've had on the side with different interested or involved parties, I think what, I think the footprint that we're living in is, is last on the list or later on the list of space to be, to be involved. is, is last on the list or later on the list of space to be, uh, to be, um, involved. And I think what we have to do is figure out if there's a project going on around us. Can we ensure safety and bus access and so on and so forth? But, um, but, but the Port Smith Housing, Housing Authority would be good neighbors to, to have to solve those problems, so.
And I got the impression from, I, I attended the meeting by Zoom and I actually testified. But, um, they would like to apply for some grants and some tax credits. And I mean, my impression was you can do that even though you're not in the building yet. I mean, the school board has handed over the building to the city. Once our educational use of that building is no longer, um, needed. So they have the building, so they know that. We're not gonna have a use for it, so, I mean, and we already voted that. So they can go in, they can do whatever they have to do without actually, you know, without actually going into the building because we're still there.
A commitment on those, yeah, that, I think you're right. I think, again, I think it'll be a, a safety, a safety conversation about how. But you renovate buildings and build buildings on school campuses while schools in session, you know, these construction companies do it. So very reasonable that we could, very reasonable that we could continue to be there through the entirety of that school year, even while a project starts around us, um, out behind us, beside us, or what have you. And, um, I expect certainly that we'll have some confirmation that that is okay well before we put this thing on the street to go out to bid. I mean, that'll, because it'll be built into the, um, the occupancy dates or the completion schedule that would be, you know, tasked in the RFP or the, the bid.
Is the building, the Sherburne School, is it okay for another year till?
I mean, it's operational. I mean, we do what we need to do.
That's been the answer for years, right?
Operational, yes.
So we don't have to worry about the boiler?
Yeah.
We did boil work about four years ago. Uh, we've been, I think roofwork was done about 10 years ago. Uh, we did some security at those doors. I mean, there's always an ongoing punch list, um, or, you know, it's, we're making it where it is. And the fire department does walk our throats, we just walk through it again. So, you know, we, you know, have them coming in as well. And if there's something there, we'll immediately address, um, as well. So we are maintaining the school to the best of what we can.
Is there heat now throughout the building?
There's always been heat throughout the building. Um, until we changed the mechanical part last year. And we just, we had a feed pump to just, again, sometimes manufacturing getting parts is not an easy thing. So we had a feed tank that the inner float, uh, just run it off, just, it is what it is, it's make, wear and tear. So it took us a while, we had to constantly go out, just monter into the water with the boilers and now that's been replaced.
I think it's, it's a repeat, and we've talked about it before, but the, the original money that was earmarked, if we were gonna completely rent out Sherburne was.
Eight, six.
We had, we had three, we had three in the CIP as a placeholder against some, some code compliance, but they're talking eight plus.
Eight point one. Eight million dollars. So I think it's a, it's a good one to, you know, I think we just, we all know that and move on from it. But it's a good one to keep bringing back the public case that this was, to stay where we were was a potentially million dollar project. Instead, we have the ability to give our kids a, a better facility, um, and help, you know, and put the city in a position to deal with housing at the same time. So, um, I don't want to lose track of that.
And the city thinks they're gonna keep the building, correct? I mean, that's the.
I have no idea.
They want to keep the building.
We'll move out like we did with the other facilities throughout the years of Jones and Lennox Heights and Wentworth School and Lafayette School and then it'll just go back to the city.
Yeah, that's right, look at all those schools that the city has taken over and made beautiful building.
Kenny, how long has it been that these are the bricks?
Twenty-eight years.
And my last question is, did you, have you been able to fix the water fountains at the, um, high school? One that has the guy.
Jeez Nancy.
This is, this is Nancy looking out for John Bohanko.
So the water bubbles, they are, one of these bubbles were just deactivated.
That's exactly what it is.
Matthew and, and between Matt and Artie, they've been going through putting the parts back together to deactivate them, to activate them back up. We also have, uh, three more bottle fill stations to add to the high school, that's three for, three more for the middle school as well strategically start increasing those out through, well, so they weren't broken, they were just completely shut down. And you have to trash bag them, if not, kids pour things down and, and they smell. And so we, you know, it kind of looks bad with a trash bag, but that's.
The most important question of the night.
They are, yeah. To best of my knowledge, they should be back in operation.
Well, you heard that John Bohanko, he substitutes once he, he couldn't get a drink.
Tomorrow morning, I want to send you guys a coffee.
Nancy, I have a quick question on, to follow up on your question around, um, New Franklin needing more space. So it's more of a clarification, is that, and then Dondaro, I know is also putting in a request. But when we did the look at possible redistricting, um, the, the buildings were not at capacity. Or even close to capacity. So I'm just trying to get clear, I'm not saying I don't support if they need, but what was the, what's the need, like, why was?
Something Joey brought up, yes.
And I guess I'm also thinking about knowing that, like, our family community currently is shrinking in Portsmouth. Like, how are we weighing those things against, um, you know, is it an immediate need? We would want to fill that immediate need, but is, is the long-term dollars towards, like, we fill immediate need and then it's not needed anymore, don't worry.
Zach, Zach going to.
I know the classroom numbers, but.
Sorry. Well, I was just, what little I was gonna, I was just gonna say, a couple of the comments that I think we've heard in the budget cycle have been, I have, I'm making it up because I can't tell the specifics, but I should. But I, I have, I have traditionally had three kindergartens, I have four, which means next year I'll need four ones. But I normally have three and four and four. And the presumption is if I have four now, then I'm gonna have four come behind. But if I have three come behind, I really don't need another room, I'll just shift. But who's got the crystal ball? So I, I'd have to drill down into some of those. I think there's a couple of them where the expectation is if this continues on, in year whatever, Kate's talking 25 or Joanne was talking, somebody's looking out. I think it's about projecting where, where they're going to be based on where they, they know they are now and think they're going to be. But right now, we have classrooms for everybody and if.
Yeah.
Even if a bubble, if a bubble moves up and a, and a lower number comes in behind them, then we free up a classroom. But there's transition, is that fair?
I know our ratios are good in our classrooms.
Yeah. I think it's, and it's one of those things about where, you know, what, um, yeah, what do we want as a classroom ratio for like a kindergarten classroom? Or, you know, and there's, um, and there's the ideal and then there's what we, what is still possible and good, good practice. So I, you know, I think, and I think we are, I mean, definitely had some conversations with, um, Dondaro about the size of some of their, some of their classrooms. Um, and how much further in terms of class size, um, stuff they would want to go. And at what point are they worried about programming? But I do think in terms of, um, you know, strategic planning, one of the things we've got to look at is what are, and then we've seen those enrollment numbers. We see what, what it looks like. To what extent does it make sense to, to do those types of projects if we don't anticipate, we anticipate that we're gonna continue to shrink?
Right.
So it's a great question.
Thank you. I just was trying to clarify, oh, is that an immediate? I didn't know there was a sudden.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, and sometimes too, of course, when principals come, I mean, you're, they're talking about programming, you know, and they've got ideas about, about ideally I would have three more spaces. If I had those three spaces, this is what we could do pedagogically that would be different than what we do right now, those types of things. So I think those are all important conversations for us to have.
Valuable questions, yeah, for sure, I agree.
Carrie had a question.
Well, I have one question related and then I, I wanted to ask another question after that. That, um, I, because so many people made different decisions than they normally would have during COVID as far as enrollment. So especially delaying kindergarten enrollment, going to private school for kindergarten, you know, doing different things. Is there any way with registration info we can get a handle on sort of how these last three years look different in starting enrollment? Or if there was a lot of delayed enrollment?
The state report has all that.
Yeah.
That state report that we get shows how many.
Not numbers though, but so like, are you having lots of six-year-olds start kindergarten? Are you having lots of, it, it's more a lot of folks that started when they were eligible to start kindergarten, didn't and waited another year?
Right.
And, and I don't, yeah. I, I don't have, and I don't know, I was just having this conversation the other day about, about our kind of kindergarten registration process. Because it, and actually it was, it was coming off of Dondaro. And it was like, okay, what do we think, what are we projecting for next year? And when do we think we're gonna have really solid numbers? And I was, for me, still educating myself about stuff. It was, what's our registration process look like? You know, do we have a registration slash screening slash, you know, whatever? And I'm used to that being kind of like an April, we're bringing in people and a really, yeah. And get, having an opportunity to really get firmer kind of committals from people as to what they're gonna be doing. But it's, my impression was that that is not as big a deal, yeah, here. And so, um, so as a result, we have less of a handle in the early spring than what I'm used to about what could be hitting us in the, in the fall.
Yeah, interesting. That's, yeah, because it's August for at least New Franklin.
Right.
So.
Right.
My, my other question, and it, it's not necessarily, I mean, I love having you here, but I, if you are looking to leave, I, I wanted to, us to talk about essentially the green sheet, because I, and, and really talk a little bit about the overall budget.
Before we do that, do we have any questions, more questions with Kenny? Kenny, you certainly welcome to stand.
Well, I mean, if you're, if I'm done answering questions.
Kenny's ready.
You gotta go home and get dinner.
You should, definitely.
Rest up, because, you know, I've heard a rumor, this white stuff coming.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Black ice is one of the 4:30, so, you know.
Have you looked into nuclear power?
Yeah, it, yeah, it gets out of Seaburke and it goes south.
Yeah.
Kenny, thank you. That was awesome, thank you so much.
Great job.
Okay, Kenny. All right, well, well, let's wrap up at 8:30, so we have about 15 more minutes, how's that? Okay, what is your question, Carrie?
I, I would like to first summarize my impressions from our first discussion of the present, presentation of the budget. So based on our binders and our white sheet, we are at a 4% increase, which we really, really don't want to go over. Um, and then, and, and then after having had a 5% increase last year. Um, and then there's this whole list of green sheet things that are things that were proposed that are not in that 4% increased budget. And so is much, in this, the energy stuff and all of the, like Kenny's stuff was really important because there's so many increases to understand that. But I guess, I don't, I know that we have other workshops scheduled. Do you already have a plan for those? And/or do we need to, I, I don't know.
Right, we want to, so I think we want to have a process that's driven by the things you want to dig into.
Mm-hmm.
So what, but we also didn't want to have, um, nothing as a default as well. So we've, so right now, in terms of the two workshop sessions, um, that were, we had Tom Lots from IT coming in. Talk about that, talk about kind of machines and placement cycles and personnel, the whole thing. And then the last, um, the last, which Nathan tells me is usually, takes the whole time, is Jeanette Southard talk about, uh, people services, um, special ed and, and everything in that arena. So right now, that's what we have scheduled, but we can schedule, we can schedule additional people to come in around particular topics or issues that you want to dive into in a deeper way.
I mean, I think that the, the one piece I, for me, so I, I love Jeanette and learning about all of that. I don't necessarily feel like I have any questions after reviewing the special ed budget. It is what it is and that's always where we come to it, or that's in the one other conversation I've had. Because this is my second year on the board, that's where we came to in the conversation. And it sounds like that's usually where we come to. Um, I guess my biggest question or concern is the transition of ESSER positions because that is a commitment that we talked about. And that's not really a person or a topic, I guess that's Nathan, but, um, but I think it would be helpful without picking out each individual thing to understand what the impression was from the staff about these things not making it into the proposed budgets. If there are any egregious concerns that came up, but also how we might better plan for the transition of these ESSER things.
So let me speak to the staff part first, so I think we talked about this the other night. The, the, the things that you have included, so even just to make the green sheet, green sheet are things that were brought to us by kind of the people that oversee the cost centers. So it's department heads, principals, directors. Uh, so, so there are others, so in terms of staff in general, like the whole, everybody who works for us, there could be things that were on the cutting room floor before it even got to us that some people in the district would, um, would feel really passionate about. So I, I don't, and we didn't ask, you know, when we talked to principals, the conversation or department heads, it wasn't, hey, what were, what were things that people, did you have anybody advocate for something? And was there something significant you left out? Now, I get the impression generally, there wasn't a ton.
Right.
You know, um, there wasn't like, oh geez, I've got, um, you know, I've got several people in my building who are really on fire about the fact that I did not include blank, um, as part of this. But it wasn't, it wasn't formally part of our, part of our conversation. So there could be a pocket here or there where there's a small group of people who are worried about a particular thing that we didn't see. But generally, I did not get the impression that there was, that there was a lot of that stuff.
This, this wasn't heavily scrutinized or debated. So even on this green list, when the, when the leadership team saw it, there were, there were, there was at least one member of the leadership team who said, I don't need that. Who proposed that for me? Because you have department heads who think we need certain things in a curricular department and principals who think that would be the farthest thing from my priority. Why do they think that? Well, because their lens is different than yours. So, so this didn't even go through that kind of sifting, right? And, and the sense, my sense was, you can even see if you look at number six, in a course, in the course of the conversation, and I'll just call it out, with that principal, that principal said, I'd trade three of these for one of those, but I'm not sure that that's, it might be, but it may not be consistent with what the administrator responsible for that realm would want to do or could.
Or could do.
Could do, right? So it's all, the, all of that stuff is here. There were a couple of other, you know, someday it'd be nice if I had, uh, and those things I didn't include because they were really kind of far-fetched. I don't, we'd all like to have a personal assistant, but no, you don't get one of those. You know what I mean? Whatever they were, it didn't rise to the point of, but, but otherwise, this is pretty much everything that they were like, you know, what we really could use is.
And I did want to follow up with, um, one, and you kind of mentioned already, which was, we did something that over the last many years hadn't been done. So we went, actually went back to principals.
Yes.
We didn't bring in all the department heads for that conversation. Um, so if you were like the PE department head, you weren't part of it. But we brought principals and directors back in and walked through our rationale, um, the things that people had asked for, to what Nathan's saying. We, you know, we said, this is what was asked for from the different cost centers and gave people kind of a final opportunity, which they hadn't had before, to, to say like, is there, is there something you want to make another case for? This is the time. But they also, now, they also knew before being presented that option, what, the same thing we walked you guys through. Here's a rationale, here's our theory of action about how we develop the budget. Here's where the city comes into play, here's what we're trying to do, here's our concern. So we walked through all of that first and then talked about the things they had asked us for and then gave them another opportunity. And, and we didn't get anything back. Now, that doesn't mean there weren't some people in the room, maybe who were like, I really would like to have this thing, but I don't know that I wanna, I don't, I don't know in front of all my colleagues, I want to say my thing's more important than their things. Um, so, I mean, that's possible, that it could have been an element, sorry, at least I know you had Hannah for a long time.
But I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to follow up on what Carrie was saying because I, I don't know that we need a whole extra panel to sort of rehash all of these things. But I do feel like at the end of the budget process last year, there was a lot of concern about moving those positions out of our budget and into ESSER. And I understand we of course have to work cooperatively with the council and it's a process and it's a conversation. But I think that just some communication, you know, a fact sheet and a district newsletter or some other just simple, okay, all those people who came to all the town halls and did all the surveys and asked for all the things and heard from all the teachers around the district about different things that they thought we should do, they're not here. And there could be really good and legitimate reasons why we set the priorities we did. But I don't know that we ever articulated that in a super clear way. So I think just having some communication around why those positions are now coming out of ESSER because people don't remember that. And they also don't remember what happened to all the things that got brought up in all the town halls that were things that people said they want. Do you know what I mean? And I just think as we're kind of going back through the budget and we're saying we're adding maybe one FTE, there's a lot of reasons for that and it's an economy that we're in. But I just think explaining that clearly.
Brian, do you have a hand up?
Sorry. Yes, I do.
I didn't know if you, if you watch or if you.
I've always watched. I realized, hey, there's something on my arm. Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing that I've noticed in these budget cycles is sort of, at least the last, I don't know, four years or so, it's been, you know, um, at least the last, I don't know, four years or so, it's been, you know, sort of the, I can't remember the terminology, but continuing operating budget or whatever, has always been around 4%, right? So, we're going to be facing this exact same issue at 4%, and I just did the math, it's about roughly 1.5% that, you know, is being put into Esser right now, that we would have to absorb next year. So, something we should consider, because, you know, I think we got sort of a pass last year, because, you know, the inflation and stuff was high, and people sort of understood, but, you know, if we face the same thing next year, we could be, we could lose some of these positions. And so, you know, part of, part of me wants to say, okay, I know that there's, you know, part of this is give and take in the conversation, maybe we should start looking at a couple of these and say, are these things we absolutely 100% want, and maybe just take a percentage of some of it, and just think about it from that perspective, as opposed to giving a whole wallop of 1.5% next year. I think it's something to consider when we're talking about this stuff.
So how mu, what's that in dollars, 1.5%?
It's, what is it, you have?
It's about 500,000, or 500 plus, okay.
Well, I have, on the green, at the green sheet, it's 1.16 million, right?
Yeah.
Or 1.1 million.
Oh, just the top five are?
Yeah, well, I've just, I've just added them all up, and like, if we wanted to keep them all, and so I guess.
So you're talking about just the Esser ones?
Right. He was talking about the whole.
Yeah, I'm talking about the whole green sheet, and, yeah, and the Esser ones in particular, I think are around one, was like half a million dollars, so. I'm just, you know, something to consider.
Well, I ran the numbers, Zach asked me to have that, I have to find it in the book, but it's, I want to say that adding 50% of those five positions kicked us up by 0.55%. I forget the dollar amount. And so, adding all of the five took us up by 1.1% from the four that we're at now, just to give you that, that's to the exclusion of everything else on the green sheet, that's just those Esser. And I encourage you to have some conversation about, if you're going to champion anything, what of those Esser positions really have legs to stay long-term, and those that do, what portion of it should we start to swing for now, so that you make next year? Because you're right, I think you're going to continue to see, we brought, we brought the floor of our COLA up on almost all of our contracts to 3.0, and so what has been 3.5 to 3.75 out of the gate, just to status quo, continuing services, is going to approach 4 every cycle.
So I was just going to say, two, is it's not as easy, of course, because it's not just about the amount of money, but it's the timeline. So you can't just be like, well, I like these two things, and I don't like that, so we'll put these together, we'll drop this other thing, because it doesn't matter September or '24.
They're all gone.
The money's gone. So it's, you know, it's, and I think that's, when we built this, that was the thing, it was, I think I was, that was the part I was most uncomfortable with, was presenting you with something that was four, and still puts us in a position where we're in, a little bit of a panicky mode move next year, maybe, if we don't take on some of it.
I mean, I get the use it or lose it kind of deal too with the money.
That's true too. Yep, yep.
Hope.
Oh, I think Margo was.
No, you were ahead of me.
Okay. I guess I'm looking at these things, and two of them that fall into Esser fall into mental health, two of them fall into math. So I'll just re-request, because we have a new administration here. So I had requested back in the day when we first started talking about Esser, there was a lot of talk about math tutors needed and math intervention, and could we kind of look at our math program, and what we might need to actually develop in our district for a comprehensive math program? And, and could that be presented to us, what that might look like? That never happened, perhaps, in all the transition, but the reason I asked for that is because PHS had a math tutor interventionist at one time, then that got taken off the books and taken away, now they're asking for it back for obvious good reasons, but instead of us doing these Band-Aids, and then we don't need it anymore, can we, can we look at our program and see where the supports are needed for the long-term, and where the gaps are, and kind of just have a more comprehensive look at it than just, oh, we're short here right now? Because I feel like we're being a little more reactive to math problems in our district. And then, the other thing I had asked for is a, I'd really like an understanding of our social work, guidance, counselors, psychologist, all of those positions in one place, because, again, we keep getting requests, I think for good reason, for needing these types of positions, but I have never seen, since I've been on the board, or even in this district, what, what all those resources are, and where they are, and what their roles are in the district. And so, for me to be able to really understand the needs here, and are we overlapping, are we using all these positions in the best capacity, that's something I would really appreciate seeing as we have more of these, because I'm surprised that there's not an additional counselor position, not guidance counselor, but counselor position at PHS. Knowing that Eileen is constantly requested, and I know she's out on maternity leave right now, so poor Mr. Winters' door is like being beat down. I mean, I've got three kids at the high school, I go in that room a lot, and those, it's a revolving door in the counselor's office. So I'm just really surprised to see that we don't have that here. I, I don't know, I just feel that's not needed, but that hasn't been what's been communicated by Eileen in her own presentations, of when she originally came on, she's not even fully doing her position that she was hired for yet, because she's making up the difference in other positions. So to me, that's a little bit of a red flag of why we, I mean, I love her, I think she's done a great job, and I love that she's been able to take up the slack in, not slack, that's the wrong word, that's the wrong word, I'm not saying anyone's slacking, but fill the gaps, I would say, in other needed areas. But we did hire her for particular reasons, and she really hasn't been able to get to some of those things yet. So I'm, I'm just kind of confused there, is why there's not.
I think that analysis should be helpful, I don't mean to interrupt the other questions, but to answer that a little, I think the analysis is useful, I think it's important that you know that, that you see some of the resources that are outside of the general fund, that are in some federal funds and otherwise. It's hard, the Eileen position is hard, because Eileen's understanding of the job, as she's talked to me about it, similar to what she said, Eileen's understanding of the job and the needs doesn't seem to have been coupled with the job that she, the person she replaced was always funded, or at least in the recent history, had been funded almost 70% by this DHHS grant. And so, she describes very, very eloquently the work that she intends to do, which is different from the work that the grant pays for, and I think, without argument, it could and should be two positions, but it never was.
Okay.
And, and so.
That's new information to me as a board member.
Yeah, so she replaced the position Marcy Blanchett was in, and I think Marcy's, Marcy's certification and her role may have been more consistent with the goals of the DHHS grant that was funding a big chunk of her. And this budget doesn't fully fund the position in the district and exclude the DHS money, or leave that orphan to fund itself, whatever it can afford.
Is Ms., I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is Mr. Winters also in that grant? Or is he a different line item?
Different line item.
Even though he plays a similar role?
Right.
Okay.
So first, the DHS is a student system.
So it's funding sources and trying to use funding sources to like, make this as efficient in terms of the finances as possible, too.
Well, that wasn't made clear when we went through the hiring process.
It seemed like it wasn't making clear, Eileen. Because when Eileen came to me, when Eileen came to me, she was like, and I said, I didn't, I wasn't there, I don't know Eileen, but it's, the position's always been funded in large part, I mean, more than half, 70% has been funded out of this grant.
But it was even pitched in, in Courtney Richon's, like, her presentation to the board before Eileen was hired, like, we're going to get this new person, and this is worth it. So I would, I would love to see her be able to do.
Do that job.
What was pitched to the board, because that was one of the reasons of us supporting the hiring. There was never, at least, maybe I was asleep at the will at that meeting, but I don't recall ever being told that that position was ever funded by a grant. That, that's news to me as a board member, so that's why I'm.
So you'll see it in there.
I really would like to understand these positions in our district, because the reality is, mental health, health cost, I mean, Brian's right, we're going to be 4% out the gate from here on out. That's just reality. You know, costs are going up, not just like retirement, but health benefits, dental benefits, like, we'll be lucky if we get to stay at 4% out the gate, right? Like, that's the reality. So this is why other districts are putting in 6.5% budgets. And I think we have to be bold enough to, you know, say, just like we did with our superintendent, hey, there's an increase here because he can't afford to live in Portsmouth if we don't give it to him. Like, we have to say we need these things. And with mental health, I think we need to continue to advocate for those things.
One more, one more thing on Eileen is that I think that the other thing.
I'm sorry, can I, can we not talk about specific people? Because it's, it's our, it's a personnel piece.
Yeah, I'm not trying to talk about anyone particular.
And it's the positions. So I just, sorry, it came up again. That's what I was going to say, and I jumped in.
I appreciate it. The other thing that's a challenge about the position is that I think the grant, the DHHS grant, was awarded and is being managed these last, this last cycle and a half differently. There's a new agency. Instead of it being handled internally by the department, it's being handled externally by an agency that was contracted, and they are to the letter expecting and demanding accountability, reporting. I think it's very possible that through at least the last few cycles of the previous employee, the, the expectations of the department for the funds were lax by comparison, and, and so we may be, may have been able to do more comfortably whatever we needed in the high school with those funds, as opposed to conforming to the letter of the, of the grant terms and conditions. Still satisfying the grant, but not necessarily doing it so exclusively as, as the current employee is being driven to, I think, so by those expectations. So, somebody else would have to weigh in more, because I've only been on the periphery of that, but you'll see the position as it stands right now is 31%, I think, in the district budget, in the guidance area of the high school in 109.
And how do we get to those numbers, Zach? Is it by, I mean, are we asking students to see, I mean, I understand that, yes, it's important to listen to our faculty as well, but are we asking students where they feel there's more need for their own resources, or are we just kind of taking it by what student demand is walking through the door, or do we really?
So, so I would say none of that's formalized, so I, there's not a formalized process where we ask students what we should invest in for the budget.
No, I wasn't suggesting that specifically, I just mean their resources.
But in terms of what, how the high school team came together with, with this particular proposal and their thought process about how to, you know, what type of resources to ask for, and how to, how to allocate that within kind of the bigger guidance umbrella, you know, we've had some, but that was part of a short. It was a short, very short conversation around, around that type of stuff, so I don't, I can't speak to why Steve and his team felt this particular kind of arrangement at the moment's way to go. I would, but I would guess, being in a similar situation, that until you have the ability as a building leader to do a deep dive in a particular department, you're not inclined to make radical changes inside of that department.
Does social worker position add well, is that for the whole district? What's well? The wellness, but is that specific?
Cost Center 182 is the wellness.
Yes.
Cost Center, and that's where, that's where I figured I would put that position if it were district. When I was.
But will it be a district-wide position? Or will it be signed to a particular building?
I mean, I.
I don't think, there wasn't a heavy consideration of.
Yeah, that position right now is.
We like it.
Yeah, position is based at the middle school now.
But there wasn't a request for it at any particular building.
This is a new position funded by Esser.
This is.
Lisa.
There's an existing person at, at PMS.
So we need to keep that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Phil asked.
Yeah, I will be very quick, because we're past our time, but interestingly, Hope's was right on the, my thinking, like, I, it would be really difficult for me to sit here as a board member, after hearing, seeing our state test scores for math and science for the last three years, and not roll that into a more serious position, and hearing for two years the increased need for mental health, and the success of our social worker position, we know has been lynchpin. It's like, we can't walk away from that and put it on a green sheet. That feels incredibly fiscally irresponsible. So I guess what I'm asking for is, if we're going to do a study on our math program, I think we have to roll science into that, because we are below state levels, we've been trending that direction for years, this is not new news. So we have to, we can't keep putting Band-Aids on with our budget, we have got to be proactive. I'd like a breakdown in guidance, because I agree with Hope, I think we have positions that are not clearly defined, I think we probably have the manpower, but maybe we're not meeting the modern needs that have arisen. But I guess the part that I really struggle with is, we've heard from our students on more than one board occasion, asking for more guidance, and asking for a LEAD Act, and this is the second budget cycle in a row, it's, it's not there, it feels, when you have students who are advocating for that need eloquently in front of a board, and for it to never make it into a proposal feels uncomfortable. Portsmouth is not separate from the trends that are happening in the country right now. We are seeing a rise in addiction, we are seeing a rise in mental health. I, I am not comfortable with the purple sheet not reflecting any of that. So that's, so if this purple sheet is how we're going to land, I as a board member need a wealth more of information on the guidance breakdown. I'd like to know why we still aren't considering a LEAD Act, or is there a place to put it in? And if we've done, as we look at that math study, because we know we've heard for years we need the math tutor and interventionist, I think it would be foolish not to add science into that, because it's following, it's just one year behind that trend, but actually moving faster. And I think we're going to end up with a 7% need next year if we don't incorporate that into the discussion this year.
So keep in mind that if we were to add these five that are on the green sheet, the first five, the Esser ones, if Brian's math is correct, it adds 1 point, it owns a 1.5% so it comes out to 5.5%.
I was actually trying to figure out next year's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, but the total would be a 5.5%.
No, no. Wait, 4.55.
If we were to add those five positions.
Add 50%.
If you add half of those.
No, I'm saying at 100%.
If you do it at 100%, you'd add 1.1, so you'd go to 4 point, you'd go to 5.1% overall would be.
So everybody keep that in mind, do we want to go to 5.1? Just as an example, if we were to add positions, we might get up to a 5.1% or a 5%.
But that's adding 100% of the position.
Right.
We originally proposed 50%, we're rolling it out for two years right now.
Yeah, we talked about slowly integrating those positions in, it's what I recall voting on, is that we would take those and we would slowly roll out those salaries, right?
In your defense, you had three positions, that you thought you would do 50% this first year coming, and then this next 50% you'd pick up. It was at the end of the budget cycle that the city council pushed us, and we took the math tutor at the middle school and the social worker position, and we pushed, no, no, I'm sorry, the math tutor and the guidance, the first two on the list. The first two were budgeted through your process out to city council, they were in the general fund budget, and the city council opted to have us push them out, and I said at the last breath, and I'm not, I'm not proposing that now necessarily, but I will, I said, please understand, those two positions will come back to you next year because you pushed those out. So today, those would take us, I'd have to look at the numbers, but, but if we pushed all of those two back in, it's 215,000, $205,000.
But we never put these in, please remind me if I'm wrong, Nathan, we never put these in with the impression of taking them out. We took them in based on being able to roll them in over a period of time.
The first two, you were, you expected would be fully in the budget this year, and the other three, that were new positions, newer positions, you expected to pay for fully out of Esser, if fiscal '23, the one we're in now, half of it would be out of the district next year, and then the full amount the following. And then they added those other two at the last day. So now you have five of them that you confront, whether you move some or all of one or two, or some or all of, all five of them. That's what we continue to maintain. Your first, your first line of, oh, we got to have this, is dealing with those five.
Do the step down.
Unless you look at any of those and say, that's transitional, that's short. Unless you look at any of those and say, that's transitional, that's short term, we can let that go after September '24. But I would, I, I would just throw that out. That's, that's with you. Otherwise, I'm running the numbers so that I'm prepared to answer your questions about all five.
Lisa, you have the last word.
Oh, well, I guess if our question here is what to do about the numbers on the green sheet and how to think about these positions, particularly in math and science and mental health, I think we really should bring in people who can speak at a high level to how many kids are using these services, like what are we seeing in test scores? You know, I know, like, there was a high school PAC meeting where they talked about how many kids in math aren't getting what they need from just the basic classroom instruction for a variety of reasons that, you know, may or may not have anything to do with the teachers, might have a lot to do with the pandemic, we don't know. But clearly, more and more kids are needing second level intervention and then extra help. And I think to be able to buttress what the needs are as we're asking for the money is going to be really important, whatever we decide to do. So I think Carrie started this by saying, you know, we do get the same spiel every year from Jeanette about special ed where most of that's federally mandated. So we're not really going to change that budget as a board. We're going to do what those kids need and we are required to provide for them. So having that insight is great. But I think it would be really important for this budget to hear what do we need? What are we doing with the dollars we have right now? And what are we going to do with this extra money? And what's the impact of not providing it? Because.
Can we also please look at our partnership with Seacoast Mental Health and what's going on there? Because I know.
They don't have capacity.
There's waiting lists.
There's no resources.
There's negative resources there, which is why I go back to, why aren't we having more counselors within our, within our building?
I mean, I think that is part of the longer-term plan and strategy around, you can't, you know, we, we can't, I don't think as a district, it's smart to assume healthcare for folks unless we have an embedded health center. So it's not that, like, it's not there and we make up for it. It's either we plan for other options to embed that. But when you're talking about, if I see a patient at Families First and the reimbursement is $200, and if I saw them at the schools, it would be 60. So there's just this financial point that, like, we can't just keep putting things in without having that system. But that's a whole nother. You've heard me.
But that's different from a social worker and a counselor in the school who's there to deal with day in and day out stressors that are coming up and are impacting kids' ability to learn. Like, that's our job.
And even, even as a counselor said to me at Seacoast Mental Health, it would be helpful if schools, they weren't just talking about Portsmouth District, but if schools just had someone, because you, the partnerships call up and say, I really need you to see this kid, but there's no one there to then fax over to me, what am I seeing about this kid? What's the workup on this kid? What, like, they come in cold to me. And, you know, that was pointed out to me by someone that's in the field. And, I mean, when we had COVID, Carrie, I, I pointed out exactly what you're talking about. Whether we like it or not, when the schools were closed, we, we are in the business of services. We, we were the place to go for kids to get fed. We got all kinds of calls and letters about, you know, abuse going up in, in homes of some children and that they're in a safe place and they have counseling and they have safe place to go to, I know we don't call it guidance anymore, but to the counseling center. Like, all those things were missing the moment the school doors were shut. So whether we like it or not, whether we have a system for it or not, we are providing those services and.
Well, I think at our last budget meeting, we didn't have any guests scheduled. Is that correct? So maybe could, if we could have the math department, math and science and the mental health at that time. I believe in the last budget session, we did not have a guest.
I think we talked about maybe Jean, I mean, and love Jeanette, amazing, but like, maybe not.
In addition to her, we.
I don't know that.
I think what Carrie's saying.
You don't need it.
You don't need it. There's nothing we can do in special ed. We are federally mandated for those funds. The point of her coming was.
We love her, but we don't need her at that meeting.
And she does a great job of explaining that.
She could still email that to us or share it.
It's really in the public.
It's nice to hear that. I think it's nice to hear that. Zach, let Zach speak. Okay, go ahead.
So I, I think what we, I think what's going to be interesting is, and we're, look, we're, it's a difficult position to be in a spot to say, to say, just give me, I'll, I'll take whatever you want to give me, you know? I mean, like, I'm, I got to run this place. As long as it's going to go through and the city council is going to approve it, I'll take, you know, let's put four more counselors in, let's do, like, you know, let's do all that stuff. Like, I'm not resistant to any of that. I just want to make sure that we can land what we, what our plan, whatever the plan is, that we think is solid, that it's actually going to go through. So that's one. And then I, you know, I, I, I also think that if you bring in, and I'm, I'm cool with this as a process, but if you want to bring in people who are in math and science to talk about whether or not we need math or math or science help, they're going to give you unbelievably passionate, well-thought-out thing that that's the case. If you bring in somebody from guidance in counseling world to talk about whether or not you need more counselors, they're going to give you the unbelievably convincing, passionate defense as to why that's the case. So you just pick whoever it is, you're going to bring them in, they're going to give you an unbelievable, because there's need everywhere. So I'm not saying don't do that. You, you have an interest in certain areas, bring those people and have that conversation. You will walk out of that conversation convinced that we should add people in those areas.
And is it possible to get, like Margo just said, data on that? Like, maybe we don't need them to come, but could we have the data of how many students need these services that aren't getting them? And how many kids really do need the extra help in math and science? I think that's pretty, that's a form.
I, I mean, I, I think these are great. Test scores tell us that.
Like, do, do we need a designated?
How many kids are tasking into middle school, high school? Can they be split? What is, like I said, what's the program really look like in the district wide? Where's, where's the data on the math to show us, like, where's the breakdown that's occurring that, and I want to just.
Maybe Zach can just get that information.
I think something, so I would say in the time and will, you know, you know, Patty and I will work around what data is available to answer some of those questions. But some of that data may be incomplete, you know, in terms, in, in the level of precision you're going to want in order to make some of the judgments you probably would want to make, it might not be available or it might not be chewed in a way that is, you know, summarized and actionable. Again, we're happy to, to make an attempt, but some of this stuff is a much deeper data dive.
And some of the data, you're, you're going to be expecting quantitative, you're going to be expecting numbers, and some of it might just be qualitative anecdotal information about students that are needing these things because this is not something, you, you don't necessarily harvest data for the, the inverse, who's not getting something. Well, you don't know because the kid walks by the counseling office, it's packed, I'm not going to go in there. We don't necessarily know who those kids are. We can give you numbers about kids who are using, who are in math intervention, we can, who are using the tutor, those kinds of things. You've got the math scores, you know what those are. And so there's a way to make an inference from that information. But I also think too, and one of the things, I just had a conversation last week with the math interventionists that they hired at the high school, and I was sitting with the curriculum director and we were talking about, well, what is it about math? It just seems to be a universal issue. You're constantly reading, you're reading all the time, but you're not mathing all the time. You're not constantly doing arithmetic problems, you're not constantly doing that. So it's that constant reminding and re-coaching and re-training and re-teaching, and those are the areas that end up developing the holes because even if you're home during the pandemic, you're, you're sitting, you're reading, you're going over things, even if you're reading for pleasure, that's constantly happening. Math is a different approach. So there's always need for math intervention regardless of, you know, how the students are performing. So those are just some of the things. I mean, we, we could definitely look for that, but I don't know that we're going to get it to the specificity, like Zach said, that you're looking for to be able to make that decision for yourselves.
What I'm looking for is, I want to have a better understanding, like, I'm not trying to, I'm not going to dive into this, but I just say, we have a block schedule.
Yep.
That leaves a huge gap with math for a lot of kids. Like, go, they can go and have math at the beginning of the year and not have math again until a whole nother year. That's a huge problem with math. And so that's what I'm asking. When I read math interventionists and I look at the numbers, I want to understand what is that role? How many kids is that person going to be able to serve? Is that going to be district-wide? Is that only going to be at the high school? Is that going to be only serving a small number of kids that are, you know, failing out? Or is that going to catch the middles that aren't in honors but maybe still aren't grasping level whatever we have at the high school right now? I want to understand more of the capacity of the role, not just it's an interventionist. Because then we get down the road and we think, we covered that with a counselor or we covered that with an intervention only to find, oh, no, no, that person's only doing this small slither. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
So you want to know.
Or we could have fixed it if we just didn't have one person and we looked at the program and fixed it through a program or a different schedule or, I don't know.
You want to know how the positions are being used?
Yes.
I mean, that I can, I mean, that.
We can do that.
We can do, which is like, here are, here are people that are inside of that sphere, which is this combination of, of, we'll call them counseling-esque roles. And here they are in terms of where they are in each building, here's how they're funded, and here's a general description of what they, they're actually doing. That we can do, it's still going to take us some time, we'll be scrambling in order to pull it together in time to, to put it in front of you in a way that is going to be helpful.
Well, we also had Phil Davis when he was here, and he made a big point of raving about the math interventionists and also the social worker. And the social worker has been working miracles there. That was just part of his presentation.
Yeah. And, and when I think about, I think that's the challenge though, right? Is that when, if, when you have articulate people come and tell a story about what's happening inside of their space and they're credible people, that it's really easy for that to totally influence a conversation about a much bigger kind of, how, how are we running things and what's, what's the system and how does it all kind of come together? But it's, but it's, but even in those situations, those, it was all anecdotal, right?
But as a result of what he said, I contacted all the nurses in all the schools and offered them the share program that our church sponsors, where, where they provide food, clothing, cars fixed, all kinds of things. And the nurses were thrilled to get that information. And it all came from the social worker at the middle school who had, who had taken care of that. Right. Okay, all right, we know we got some people here. Carrie, can you keep it brief though? Can you keep it brief?
Okay, I want to backtrack, and I think this was a really good conversation about the different things. I don't think, I would rather wait until after this budget cycle to have a more comprehensive view of math utilization, math, science and counseling. I know we've talked about it, we haven't had that topical focus thing, but I am compelled that by, yes, we cannot add more positions to this, but I think at a bare minimum, I would appreciate some form of an orange sheet or a yellow sheet that has.
Allers been requested.
That has these positions, these Esser positions that we said we would transition, like, what that would look like. And if that comes in reasonable, because we're talking about what else we need. And I don't, I think that we need to just talk about what we need to do to ensure that these important positions continue and then later take that deep dive. But I would also ask that, that we come to consensus on this. So I'm saying, I'm not getting what I, I didn't get what I asked for, Nathan, and, you know, you didn't do these five, you know, I think we need to just collectively either through the vice chair and, uh, chair, are you chair?
Yes.
President? Chair.
Chair. Vice chair, chair, vice chair.
You know, like, I think that direction really needs to be summarized of, like, these are the things that we are expecting in these next meetings. Because we've had a great conversation, but there's been 20 things requested and they can't all be done.
Okay. We, we can decide that.
Well, I think we can summarize, but, you know.
So I do think that's a, it's a great point because we, we, as a team, we walk out of these conversations with which of those things are we supposed to do? Because it's, because it is, we, we walk out and very often, like, I have a running list and I just keep, and I, and it's not a joke. We can walk out on any given night and be like, we have 20 different requests walking out of this meeting that we're supposed to fulfill in a week. And we can't do it with fidelity and can't do it deeply. And so then it's just a matter of, we walk back in the room, how many people are going to be disappointed or mad at us that we didn't complete the 20 things while everything else is going on, strategic plan, communication plan, you know, running the district, doing whatever.
Just running the district.
So the, so, so it would be helpful in, as a process thing, and maybe we can't figure this out tonight, when we wrap up a meeting or a conversation to be like, these are the actual action steps we'd like to see before we return or here's a timeline by which we would want to do it. I think that would help us as a team a lot.
Well, I can say my two requests I've had on the table since.
But I think they have to, I'm, I'm talking for a second, Carrie, please.
Yeah, I think they are, they're board requests though.
So.
Not individual.
I didn't say they're individual. I'm just speaking for myself.
All right, all right, let's stop, let's stop. Hope, quick, make it quick.
I'm just saying, that is something I have found, even with the last administration in my time as a board member here, it is difficult to continue to be asked for more social workers, more this, more that. And it's like, we give them and they just kind of go in a black hole and we don't really know what their positions are or we come back to find out. They're not really doing what we thought they were going to be doing and so they didn't really absorb the need. And so that would be very helpful for me personally. I know it's a board.
Brian has a comment. Thank you, Hope.
To summarize, no, I'm just saying.
That would be good. Do it.
Do it, Brian.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I hear what you're saying, Zach, about like, the, you know, somebody's going to come up and give an impassioned speech. And the problem, I think, the unease that we have is that anecdotally, we see there's an incongruency of what we hear and then what we see on the sheet for the asks. And so part of it, you know, as you said, you know, I think part of it is the process needs to be more data-driven. And I think that's hopefully with the strategic planning and we can kind of roll that in because what, you know, you, you guys don't even have the data, right? And I'm sure that when you had the ask, it's somebody literally asking and trying to defend why they need it, right? Not, not necessarily all data. So I think it talks about the process, you know, needs to be looked at a little bit. And I don't think it can be fixed, you know, without a really good strategic plan and really looking at it. And the other piece I want to point out is the Esser funds. And I think the spirit of those Esser funds was the acute need that we have, right? And we kind of myopically focused on the idea of like, oh, we've got to make sure we keep these positions. But if we have a need, we have the Esser funds, probably should use them. And if we do see some of these positions on the sheet that we want and we know what we're going to keep, then we should probably fund them. That's, you know, that's the way I feel about it. And.
Good summary.
That's my summary.
Very good. Okay, we will see everybody next Tuesday.
But perhaps, Zach, you had promised at the beginning you would send out a Google Doc.
We did.
Oh, see?
Check your email.
Why do you check your email in the middle of a meeting, people?
Because it's from Zach, he's in my VIP inbox.
That is not best practice. But on that note, should, then why don't? Why don't we summarize these questions in the Google Doc? Because it sounds to me, what we're hearing is this board is not necessarily in agreement with what's been assigned to the workshops.
Yeah, and, and we, like I said, we're, we're happy to do what you need.
But if those are in there, where's the point for you to give feedback back that, that it's been received? And this is, I'm not saying these are your working orders, but if you get, never mind. I guess I just.
I think, like if there's the list of 20 things and you sit as a team tomorrow and say, here are the three things I think are most important and these two kind of came out there. I think that's up to Nancy and Margot to say, yeah, go ahead with those three things. And we will talk to Carrie about how four and five are not going to happen.
I don't agree with that. I don't think that it is just up to Margot and Nancy. We all have to give a vote on the board and I don't feel like that I am being informed to give my vote. I don't, I feel like I need.
Why don't we go into that Google Doc and put our comments in there and let that steer where they decide to bring people in? Because then if lots of people on the board have feedback on the same thing or questions on the same thing, then that can guide it. Because I agree with you a lot about a lot of the questions, but I can also understand why we might not either practically be able to ask all of this in the next month or whatever.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, does it, I haven't, did that just go out?
We were doing our job.
Kenny was, Kenny was in the midst of rebooting.
Those of us then are on our computers during.
Multitasking, I applaud you for that.
They're models of efficiency, Margot.
I know, I'm very jealous.
6:53 PM.
Yeah, before you, before you adjourn, I just want to remind you, we have a full school board meeting with a budget component next week on Tuesday night, the 24th. On Wednesday night, the 25th at 6 o'clock in chambers. The city council is holding a budget workshop. I, you can watch it at home, you can come on YouTube, right? You can watch it online or you can come and be present. I think it would be very important for all of the board to take an interest in what the, it's so frustrating to me, right? I mean, we're living it, but that we're done. I mean, we're not done, we're just into the conversation now. But the book's been worked, we've been on this for a couple, two and a half months or better. And the city's process, its cycle is just different because of the timeline that they live with. But the guidance that's going to come out of tomorrow, next Wednesday night would have been useful to us in October or in September. And so whatever it is that comes up and is discussed, talking about trends, talking about the city's one-time revenue hit that we're going to suffer with on the tax rate, all of that, I think is something that, we'll bring it back to you to the extent that we can. But you guys being engaged in part of that conversation, I think is important as well, so.
This is the 25th?
The 25th at 6 o'clock, yeah. They haven't always done it like that. And I know that with prior councils and prior manager, you guys had different guidance earlier in the cycle. And it's just, it's just working differently now. But I want to, I didn't want you guys to miss the fact that that's happening next Wednesday.
Seven, I assume?
Six thirty.
Six.
Six?
Six, they're doing it at six.
And you can go on Zoom because I've done the Zoom.